Good afternoon, everybody. This is the November 8th, 2018 afternoon session of the Portland City Council. Before I ask Carla to read the roll, I want to apologize for my tardiness. We were, Commissioner Saltzman and I, were at the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new Beatrice Morrow in northeast Portland. This is the first affordable housing project that has actually opened under the North-Northeast Housing Strategy. So it's a great milestone for the city of Portland, but I do apologize for my tardiness. Carla, please call the roll.
You daily?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Saltzman?
Wheeler?
Here. Good afternoon.
Welcome to the Portland City Council. The City Council represents—
Can you bring the mic a little closer? Just a little louder.
Okay. Welcome to the Portland City Council. The City Council represents all Portlanders and meets to do the city's business. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during City Council meetings so everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. To participating council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the Council Clerk's Office for Communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time when testifying. Please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When you have 30 seconds left, a yellow light goes on. When your time is done, a red light goes on. If you are in the audience and would like to show your support for something that is said, please feel free to do a thumbs up. If you want to express that you do not support something, please feel free to do a thumbs down. Disruptive conduct such as shouting or interrupting testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the remainder of the meeting. After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass. Thank you for helping your fellow Portlanders feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe.
Thank you. Carla, could you please read the first item?
Item 1159, amend ordinance for interim use of the multiple-unit limited tax exemption program for affordable housing in housing developments not subject to inclusionary housing to be in accord with Multnomah County modifications.
Colleagues, the adoption of mandatory inclusionary housing prompted many developers to enter their unbuilt housing projects into the city's permitting queue in advance of the inclusionary requirements that began in February of 2017. I've worked with the Housing Bureau to create an incentive program for those projects to still include some level of affordability. In March of this year, the council approved interim use of the multiple-unit limited tax exemption program for projects not obligated to make units affordable under inclusionary housing. The Housing Bureau is back before us today to make some adjustments to the program. Greetings.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Matthew Schaubold with the Portland Housing Bureau. As the mayor mentioned, after, because it is a tax exemption authorized under state statute, requires the concurrence of 51% of the taxing jurisdictions. After you passed the ordinance earlier this year, we've been working with the county and the county just today adopted a resolution with a modification to the ordinance that you passed, and we're here to walk you through it and hopefully get your concurrence so we can put the program into place. So I'll turn it over to Dory Van Bockel.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Dory Van Bockel. I am the manager of our development incentives team, including our tax exemption and inclusionary housing programs. So as Matthew mentioned, we were at the county today with the same presentation. I'll go through, there's probably more detail than you need, so afterwards we'll leave room for questions if there's something that you want to weigh in more on, but I'll try to move through it quickly. So just for some background and clarification that Matthew already covered a little bit, when inclusionary housing went into effect in February 2017, it included use of the multi-program as one of the financial incentives provided to help offset the affordable housing being included in the new construction of new developments. And in March of 2017, and then in May, the city and county adopted a rolling cap on the amount of foregone revenue available for use with the multi-program, which kept the original $3 million cap in place but allowed it to adjust to any housing surges, any cycles of development that increased during a given year, five-year period. And as Matthew mentioned, in March, we were here before you to adopt the multi-program for use of, for projects prior to the inclusionary housing and have just today been at the county board of commissioners who approved a resolution to concur with that program, and we have a couple of slight modifications. The reason and why we are pursuing this is that as of the onset of inclusionary housing in February of 2017, up to 19,000 permits were in the pre-vested queue, so subject to zoning requirements prior to inclusionary housing. The program adopted originally was for, for the interim use for these projects outside of inclusionary housing, was for a two-year period, we have a year and a half or so left of that, and is a 10-year tax exemption for 10 years of affordability, citywide, with a $3 million cap on foregone revenue that is part of that rolling five-year cap already approved by both the city and the county. And then we also have a $500,000 cap on each individual project applying within the program, making it available primarily for smaller projects. There's, so there's no additional fiscal impact that hasn't been considered. The changes made after working through things with the county are two. One is to limit the program only to affordable levels at 60% of area median income, rather than having some options up to the 80% option before. And additionally, making some allowances to increase the number of family-sized units that might be provided in the program by reducing the total affordable units provided if they are two or more bedrooms. So as of today, the 19,000 units in that pre-vested queue has decreased significantly, but there are roughly 8,200 or 8,400 units, excuse me, that are still within the pre-vested pipeline. In our investigation of working through that data—
Why has there been such a decline?
So a number of those have either moved forward with permitting, and so in our 2018 inclusionary housing update, we do have some more specifics as to what has happened to that actual pipeline.
Can you remind us, Dory? How long does the entitlement, if they filed pre-inclusionary housing, how long does that entitlement last?
It depends on how they reached the entitlement. If it was through a permit process, they have a limited, you know, two years of time, but can get extensions. For the land use actions, that also could have vested a project, they have two years and then also need to, could enter permitting at that point and have additional time. So it's not a set timeframe, but yes, at some point, some of those would expire.
Thank you.
So at this point, after, again, waiting out then further projects that would exceed the $500,000 cap presumably, have either already moved forward into permitting and wouldn't be eligible or other reasons, we estimate there's a little less than 2,900 units in 42 projects, and so 20% of those units could be affordable. Obviously, we don't anticipate all of them participating, nor would there be room within the cap, but there are definitely projects that could utilize the program, and we have heard from a number of developers who are at least interested in moving forward. As far as the number of projects in the pipeline, they're distributed across the city, primarily on the east side with a couple in the north Portland, and about a third of them, though, in the central city still. And there's plenty of cap authorization, so within our five-year rolling cap of first year foregone revenue, there's still over $11 million available for the multi-program as a whole, both within this interim use as well as through inclusionary housing. To give an idea of what the value of the exemption is for a particular unit, based on our current pipeline of projects receiving multifamily tax exemptions, it averages out to about $10,000 a year, foregone revenue, or about $833 a month. About a third of that is the portion that the city would forego in taxes. And in comparing that to the benefit to the tenants in these cases compared to average rents within the central city, average rents have been about $2,000, whereas the 60% of area median income rents would be about $800 or $900 under the program, amounting into roughly an $1,100 subsidy. There's still need, obviously. The Housing Bureau and the county both see a need for units across the affordability spectrum. At least 47,000 to 49,000 units are known to be lacking as far as the housing stock for households below 60% of area median income, and this is one tool that we have to help make some affordability available. We're happy to answer any questions.
Colleagues, any further questions about this? Very good. Thank you. Excellent report. Public testimony?
Yes, we have two people signed up, Gwen Baldwin and Charles "Bridge" Crane Johnson.
Come on up. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mayor Wheeler and members of City Council. Gwen Baldwin, I'm the executive director of Oregon Smart Growth, and I'm here today in support of this revised ordinance modifying the multi-program. I want to extend my appreciation to the mayor and his office for engaging with us 20 months ago to find ways to incentivize the pre-inclusionary housing projects to include affordability in what would otherwise be 100% market rate unit production, and to the City Council for acting on this in March and again today. I also want to acknowledge the collaboration with the Housing Bureau and Deputy Director Schaubold in working with our partners across the river at the Board of Commissioners to arrive at a program that may incentivize additional family-sized apartments in Portland for those making 60% area median income or less. As was noted earlier, the majority of vested projects and the units associated with have already moved to permitting and are no longer eligible, nor are the vast majority of remaining units that are in the queue with half a million in property taxes or that have fewer than 20 units. It has taken a while to get resolution on this program, and my hope is that together we can move perhaps more swiftly with future efforts. We're very, very pleased with the work that has been done on updating the legal templates within the Housing Bureau related to the inclusionary housing program, as well as visiting with you last month related to the five-to-one FAR built or base offset package. Those are things that really moved quickly when the need was identified. We do believe that this program revision is important for the opportunities that exist within the remaining viable projects in the pipeline, and I look forward to our ongoing work together to provide the housing needed at all levels of affordability. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. It feels weird to say that. Charles "Bridge" Crane Johnson for the record, and as you know, this was at the county before, earlier today, item R4. But I think we want to look at also this in a bigger context. Tuesday night was terrific. We have here in the chamber, city council-elect Joanne Hardisty, who's going to be working hard on housing policy, which includes the fact that the city, in addition to over $250 million passed with the city's own bond, is looking to get around another quarter billion dollars from the Metro bond, and measure 102 passed, so we'll be looking for partners. When we're partnering, we don't want to be partnering with developers who thought, oh my God, IZ, I'm not going to cooperate. So in addition to voting yes on this measure 1159, I think there should be an acknowledgement that there should be an open framework to look at which developers have participated in this program to improve results with IZ or quasi-IZ on these projects in the pipeline, so that when we're doing proposals, maybe in the RFPs, RFQs for future development on the next, there's not quite a half billion because we've spent some of the first quarter million of the housing bond, but the people that participate in those projects should be the ones that were most enthusiastic in making sure that we don't have 100% luxury buildings, that we don't have developers who are resistant to having a diverse population of income levels within their buildings. So please vote yes on this 1159, but also be aware of who's, who's really interested in quality, diverse housing for all income ranges in this program as you go forward over the next few years and work with the money coming from the Metro bond. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item, colleagues? Please call the roll.
You daily?
Thank you for the report. I vote aye.
Fritz?
Very pleased with these changes. I'm happy to be able to remain in the chamber and enthusiastically vote aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Wheeler?
I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next item, please.
Item 1160, authorize the commissioner in charge of the police bureau to order content-neutral time, place, and manner regulations for the demonstrations held in the city.
Colleagues, first I'd like to preview the roadmap for today's hearing and then clarify a few items. First of all, I'm going to give a few brief remarks, then we'll have an informational presentation by the city attorney and the chief of police, then we'll have some council discussion where I'll offer substitute ordinance. The substitute ordinance, I will ask my colleagues at the end of the session to vote for, but I want to be very clear, by voting for the substitute ordinance, all they are agreeing to do is put the ordinance on the table for discussion. So it may be that a colleague would choose ultimately not to support this legislation, this ordinance, but I will ask them to vote aye to put the substitute ordinance on the table for further discussion. The substitute ordinance, which was released yesterday, includes some proposed revisions based on input from my colleagues as well as others in the community. I'll ask my fellow commissioners who have any amendments to put those amendments on the table. We will then hear invited testimony. After invited testimony, we'll hear public testimony. Due to concerns about quorum and scheduling at 5:00 PM, I'll ask the council to discuss and vote on the substitute ordinance, and again, that means just putting it into the record as the ordinance under discussion, and I will ask them to vote on the amendments. We will not be voting on the overall ordinance today. We've heard from a number of my colleagues who'd like to have time to reflect, to offer input based on any public testimony, so we will not be voting today. We will be moving it to second reading. I don't, we do plan on voting, as I said, on the substitute amendments, and we'll vote on them towards the end of the hearing before we lose the quorum. There will probably be a lot of people who would like to give public testimony. We will be losing at least one member of the council who has a important— We will be losing at least one member of the council who has an important community event this evening. I will certainly stay, and if we have two other folks who are staying to keep the quorum, we'll keep taking public testimony. So with regard to my introductory remarks, I want to start off by stating the obvious. Portland is a vibrant, livable, and economically prosperous community. It's viewed that way by the rest of the nation, but it's also true that in recent months, we've become something of a magnet for folks who are either coming from outside the community or elsewhere with either a history of or an express intent to come to our community to commit acts of violence. Demonstrations have been increasing in frequency, and unfortunately, they've also been increasing in terms of the violence that we're seeing. This creates a danger to the demonstrators, it creates a danger to bystanders, and it increases the likelihood of risks to public property. It's also unfortunate that our city has gained national recognition for these increasingly frequent instances. It's bad for the reputation of the city and the brand of the city. There's no question that it has the potential to create a negative impact on travel and tourism and the economy overall, but I think more importantly, it makes people feel less safe in the community. I want to be clear that I understand that this ordinance is not a panacea to this issue. This ordinance would provide one more tool, along with enforcing existing laws, along with setting clear expectations about what is and what is not acceptable, along with helping to educate folks on how they can come and express their First Amendment rights freely and fully and remain safe at the end of the day. The major objection to this ordinance has been, at least what I've heard so far, is that we should enforce the laws that already exist on the books. I want to be clear, I agree with that completely, and we should also, as I say, continue to educate the public and establish clear expectations. These demonstrations, I believe that we've seen, and this is just my personal opinion, are a reflection of the national dialogue that are playing out on our streets. Our response as a city and as a community serves as something of a Rorschach test on what our city values. And let's be clear, I hope all of us today can agree that we value expression and dialogue and that we reject violence. Much of the opposition that I've heard to this ordinance is reflective of the national dialogue that I just referenced. Some people believe that the ordinance goes too far and could potentially curtail First Amendment rights. That's certainly not my intention. Others have expressed concern that this ordinance doesn't go far enough in addressing the increasing presence of the alt-right in Portland specifically. As a city, we have not had all of the necessary conversations around race that are reflective in our values as a welcoming, inclusive, and sanctuary city, and that is certainly factored into this conversation as well. So that's a long way of saying, I believe it's important that we acknowledge the context in which I'm introducing this proposed legislation, but understand that whatever we do to address the behavior has to be content neutral in order to be constitutional. This ordinance is not about ideology or speech. This is about public safety and preserving the right of peaceful demonstrators to assemble. What about the constitutionality? And I know there's a lot of questions about this. Freedom of speech and association are amongst the fundamental rights guaranteed and protected by the United States and the state of Oregon's constitutions. The City Council enthusiastically supports the exercise of these fundamental rights. The law also recognizes the need for reasonable, content-neutral, time, place, and manner regulations to ensure that speech and assembly rights can be exercised safely and without significant disruption to the rights of other members of the public. For example, the United States Supreme Court has explained, quote, "That even in a public forum, the government may impose reasonable restrictions on the time, place, or manner of protected speech, provided the restrictions are justified without reference to the content of the regulated speech, that they are narrowly tailored to serve a significant governmental interest, and that they leave open, ample alternative channels for communication and information." Applying the Supreme Court standard, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals has upheld time, place, and manner regulations for demonstrations, as the Ninth Circuit Court explained, quote, "No one could seriously dispute that the government has a significant interest in maintaining public order. Indeed, this is a core duty that the government owes its citizens. Further, once multiple instances of violence erupt with a breakdown in social order, a city must act vigorously and more extensively to restore order for all of its residents and visitors. Adding large numbers of police on the street might be the solution in some cases, but in other cases could lead to more intense violence." As the Ninth Circuit Court reasoned, quote, "We do not think that even the most vital First Amendment expressions can be said automatically to overcome the need of a city to maintain order and security for its residents and visitors in the face of violence," unquote. Similarly, under the Oregon Constitution's Article 1, Section 8, the Oregon Supreme Court has held that, quote, "Some burdens on expressive activities are permissible, such as time, place, and manner restrictions." As mayor, it's expected that I will do everything I can to uphold the public safety. We cannot deny the increasing rate of demonstrations and increasing violence. This ordinance seeks to remove violence from demonstrations and preserve the public's right to express speech meaningfully. This ordinance enacts reasonable, content-neutral, time, place, and manner regulations for demonstrations held in the city with the goals of protecting both freedom of expression for demonstrators and the safety of the entire community. This ordinance does not apply for any demonstrations for which a permit has been issued. What this ordinance functionally does is give us the ability to take preventative steps to ensure public safety by setting the rules of the road when we have advanced knowledge and we have stated what that advanced knowledge is that leads us to believe that there is a significant threat of violence. Jurisdictions around the country have similar protections. There are some basic ideals that we should be able to agree on as Americans. We don't tolerate violence in our streets. Violence is not and has never been a legitimate means to a political end. I will not allow continued planned street violence between rival factions to take place in Portland, Oregon. And so I thought I'd like to turn it over to our City Attorney and the Chief of Police. Thank you for being here.
Members of council, my name is Robert Taylor. I'm Chief Deputy City Attorney. I would like to discuss just three things briefly, and then I'd be happy to answer your questions. The first is the purpose of this ordinance, and the purpose is to give the Police Commissioner a tool to issue time, place, manner regulations over demonstrations and counterdemonstrations in the city when there are facts to make us believe that violence is likely. The main goal is to provide peaceful demonstrators and counterdemonstrators the rules in advance. It has become clear, based on past demonstrations, that it's very difficult to manage these crowds on the fly the day of the event. And where we know that these are coming and we can plan in advance, this allows the Police Commissioner to let peaceful people know what the rules are so they can act accordingly, and then the police can focus their limited resources on those who are intent on not following those rules. This ordinance certainly assumes that if we give Portlanders the rules in advance, that they will follow those rules. And we are hopeful that this will give the police a tool, and the Commissioner will, or the Police Chief will speak about this, an additional tool to help manage these demonstrations with the goal of reducing violence, increasing peaceful demonstrations, reducing arrests, and reducing lawsuits. The second thing I would like to talk about is how it would work. There has been, there are two main parts of this policy in the ordinance. The first is in the directive talking about the criteria where the Police Commissioner could issue these written orders. And those criteria are, there must be a history of violence between groups, and the safety of participants and bystanders is at risk, and third, there is a substantial likelihood of violence based on statements or conduct of those groups indicating an intent to do violence or other credible information from law enforcement.
Can I just note for the record, Mayor, that the City Attorney has just set forth a standard that is in your substitute but was not in the ordinance originally filed. So, and the key that I see on page, for those of you following this at home, on page five of the original ordinance, paragraph 10C, the sub provisions 1, 2, 3 used to say "or", meaning any one of the three would be sufficient. And based on your presentation and the substitute the mayor's going to offer, just want to be clear that it now says "and," meaning they are all three necessary conditions that must be met. Is that correct?
Absolutely, Commissioner Fish. Thank you for pointing that out, and that's an important change between the ordinance that was filed and the ordinance as presented in the substitute. When there were "ors" in the ordinance, it did provide more flexibility for the Police Commissioner to respond to different situations, but there was a concern about wanting to clearly limit the authority of the Police Commissioner and make it clear that it could only be used if all three of those criteria were met. And that change has been made in the substitute, so now you need all three of those. The history of violence, the safety of participants is at risk, and a substantial likelihood of violence based on facts you know. That's a very important change. And then the other part of this ordinance is the requirement that the Police Commissioner issue written orders in advance, and that's important for a couple of different reasons. The first practically is it gives advance notice to the public about what the rules are for the demonstrations. It can be very difficult for police and demonstrators to try to manage the rules the day of. We've heard folks say that it's difficult for them to understand orders that are given by the police, by the loudspeakers, the day of, and it's hard to know the right place to go if you're trying to be there to demonstrate or counterdemonstrate peacefully. This would allow the Police Commissioner to let people know the rules of the road in advance in writing. The second important part of the written orders is it would require the Police Commissioner to state factually in writing how those three criteria that we talked about are met. So this doesn't just leave it to the Police Commissioner to say, "I'm going to issue these orders based on no facts." He's got to affirmatively state in writing how all three of those criteria are met. And that's important, particularly because courts have said, when you're evaluating these types of time, place, manner restrictions, that type of written record is very important for the court to review. And without a written record, courts are very concerned that a public official might be using unfettered discretion. But by requiring those written orders in advance to satisfy those three criteria, it can, the court can better evaluate whether those time, place, manner restrictions were reasonable. There's further limitations on what can be in the written order, and they're spelled out in the ordinance. Another example of that is how the demonstrators and counterdemonstrators can be redirected, and I would point you to Section D3, Directive D3, and this is an important point, where "any such redirection shall be to a location it is reasonably close to, sufficiently approximates, or reaches substantially the same audience as the original location." So, and that's another important principle that you get from the case law, that sometimes the location of a chosen demonstration is important for the message, and so if the government is going to issue time, place, manner regulations and redirect demonstrators and counterdemonstrators, it needs to be reasonably close to where they want to be so they can reach the reasonable, substantially the same intended audience. The last thing I want to just talk about briefly are some of the further checks on the Police Commissioner's authority in this. The first, by requiring the written orders in advance, it allows the public to evaluate the reasonableness of the use of this discretion and the reasonableness of the restrictions. And by having a Police Commissioner, an elected official, issue those written orders, it allows for some public accountability there, so they can judge the use of the discretion in the written order, and they can hold a public official accountable. Also, like I mentioned before, the written orders allows a court to review these in advance if they're challenged, so the court can see at the time when these decisions were made what the factual basis was. Third, there's a provision in the ordinance that has been added since it was originally released a couple of weeks ago that would require the Police Commissioner to report back to council within 30 days after using this authority. So the council would get to hear the lessons learned, would get to evaluate whether the authority was used properly. And then the final provision is, there's a sunset provision that currently would have this ordinance sunset at the end of 2019. So if it works and it's a useful tool, the council can vote to continue it. If not, it expires.
Robert, if I could add one more to the list, which you diplomatically left off the list. As the order would be issued by the Police Commissioner, in this case me, that also subjects the Police Commissioner to potential lawsuits, which means the Police Commissioner can be deposed, and therefore there's an incentive for the Police Commissioner to be very judicious in the use of this tool and use it in a limited manner.
Yes, sir.
In my opinion.
Yes, sir. That's part of the public.
Having been deposed recently even.
That's part of the public accountability and the accountability through the court system.
Does that complete your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Chief Outlaw, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for having me and allowing me to provide some information from the police perspective today regarding this very important ordinance. First, I think it's important to acknowledge the many protests and demonstrations, marches and events that's occurred over many years here in Portland, and a lot of those have ended with little to no incident. They've been peaceful, and those are the ones that don't make the news. But I want to acknowledge what's going on right now. I've seen some narrative out there, flat-out state- I've seen some narrative out there, flat-out stating that Chief Outlaw just wants more This is not about me. Me taking his job was not about me. Violent protests are not solely a Chief Outlaw concern or a Mayor Wheeler or Police Commissioner Wheeler concern. In fact, violent clashes between demonstrators in Portland have existed long before the two of us took positions here in Portland. However, recently, we have seen an increasing number of violent protests where various groups come together for the purpose of fighting or committing violence. This is a community concern. We have received numerous phone calls and emails from the community, and I acknowledge their frustration of not being able to move about the city, not being able to get home, pick up their kids, or get to work in a timely manner during violent protests. But not only have I heard from these community members, I've heard from other people who aren't even from here, who are fearful to come downtown. I've also heard from those who identify as activists, who want to peacefully protest about certain issues but have been silenced from others. Others who use fear tactics when it's believed that their ideologies did not align with theirs. As such, these activists fear for their safety amongst those who come together for the purpose of fighting or committing violence. And instead of them coming to exercise their First Amendment right to free speech, they stay home. The community is fed up, and they no longer want to see our beautiful city seen as a place to be disrespected by violence and lack of care and consideration to those who wish to exist safely and without threat, whether physically or fiscally, to their livelihoods. We want to make this a safe environment for everyone. And as the police commissioner and Mayor Wheeler referenced earlier, the Ninth Circuit has said adding large numbers of police on the street might be the solution in some cases, but in other cases could lead to more intense violence. And I agree. Adding more police to respond to violent protests is not always the answer. I've also heard, why should we give you another tool when you don't use the tools that you have? I will begin by stating that the question in and of itself isn't completely factual, and I'll tell you why momentarily. But my immediate response to that is, why not? I believe we all share the same goals. We want to ensure that everyone, everyone, has the right to safely exercise their First Amendment right to free speech. We want demonstrations to conclude without injuries to anyone involved or anyone in the immediate area. We want demonstrations to conclude without damage of property or infrastructure. But most importantly, we also want all of this to happen without the use of any force necessary by the Portland Police Bureau. When it comes to crowd management, there is no one set defined tool for any one demonstration, and there are no cookie-cutter responses. The more tools we have to utilize in our tool belt to address violent demonstrations will allow us to be more strategic and proactive in preventing violence before it begins. Furthermore, a response relying solely upon arrests during violent demonstrations is reactive, and it increases the likelihood that force by the PPB will be used. If we continue to focus solely upon arrests, we are not addressing the root cause of the issue at hand, and we are too late because the violence has already begun. The existing tools only allow police, when possible or feasible, to address violence after it occurs. Over time, including prior to my arrival one year ago, we have utilized the tools and laws available to us during violent demonstrations. This has resulted in arrests, uses of force to cease the violence, lawsuits, increased violence between groups, and even on one occasion, 200 officers on a skirmish line. We've also tried a hands-off approach when our presence exacerbated the situation and have sought to identify and arrest individuals after the incident. Let me tell you how we currently manage protests. When we learn about an upcoming protest or a demonstration, the police bureau members attempt to communicate with event planners, and we even assign police liaisons. The groups often do not usually respond to our concerns about safety or security. We then develop a plan, coordinating our responses with the resources that we have. However, this is difficult when we don't know when and where groups of people will march. The police bureau has expended considerable resources in past events trying to ensure that these groups remain a safe distance apart. For example, during the August 4th protest, it required more than 200 officers, as well as mutual aid by other agencies to respond. A critical component of this response meant that we had to redirect police resources during these demonstrations and were unable to answer 911 calls for service. We also had to call on neighboring law enforcement agencies, who are also short-staffed, to assist. Once these groups of people who have engaged in past violence come together, we don't know when and where they will engage in fights or assaultive behavior. It can be during a march, in the middle of a large crowd, or occur at a place where police cannot readily or easily respond. In addition, there can be challenges in responding to these acts of violence, as it takes a tremendous amount of resources to safely make arrests and control violent crowds. Unlike some other major city police departments, we are not in close proximity to other departments of comparable size. Thus, when requesting mutual aid, neighboring agencies cannot offer large numbers of personnel to assist and may be traveling from long distances to get here. So I'm saying all of this to say, we've utilized the tools that we've had for past demonstrations, and we've been innovating in our planning when we have the luxury of being able to plan in advance. Yet, after all of this, we still continue to see violence when these groups come together. Some of the costs associated with our crowd management efforts has been as follows. Since 2016, we have spent $2,945,327. So far this year, that was $441,685 in overtime to address demonstrations here in Portland. This does not include overtime taken as comp time. When pulling officers from other areas in the city to address these demonstrations, we've been forced to limit our responses to calls for service to priority calls only. At times when possible and they're able, again, we've received assistance from outside agencies to assist us with these calls. Other community impacts include injuries, as we all know, to many, not just to those that are involved in the protest, but to officers as well. I've already mentioned the fear and frustration in our community, and it also takes a huge toll on the well-being, not only of our officers, but of community members as well. These costs, both tangible and intangible, are eroding the trust for which we are working so hard to establish and maintain between the community and the PPB, and this is the ultimate cost. So in closing, this new ordinance would not only provide the police with a proactive tool, but it allows us to get ahead of the issue before it starts. We were hired, we were brought forth, to look at new creative, innovative, and strategic ways of addressing an old problem. We've been doing the same thing and getting the same results. At what point do we look for new ways to come up with a different solution? I look forward to hearing the input from other stakeholders here today, and I really hope that we can move forward towards a resolution to solve this matter. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Chief. Colleagues, any questions for this panel? Commissioner Udaley, then Commissioner Fritz, then Commissioner Saltzman.
I have a number of questions, but I'm going to hold most of them for once we hear from all the panels. So this question is for the city attorney. What hap -- okay, I need to set this up. So when Patriot Prayer plans a rally in our city, they're pretty good at walking the line of avoiding speech that would trigger preemptive action. But we do see numerous members or followers of their organization making explicit threats of violence on social media. So it's my understanding that because it's not the organizers making those threats that there's nothing that we can do in advance. Is that accurate?
That is an accurate statement, and what the case law also tells us is...
Could you -- can I just make a request? This has been brought to our attention by some folks with disabilities who testified for -- when we have answers to questions, could you, everyone, identify themselves again, just so that folks in the audience who may have a disability know who's speaking?
Thank you for the reminder. It's Robert Taylor, Chief Deputy City Attorney. The answer to your question, Commissioner Udaley, is that's correct. And the other thing that the other principle that emerges from the case law is, just because you have folks that have demonstrated in the past and it has led to violence, you can't restrict their right to demonstrate again in the city. And San Francisco tried that a number of years ago in response to some mass demonstrations, where they effectively prohibited demonstrations in the entire city and county of San Francisco. And the Ninth Circuit struck that down. So part of what this ordinance is trying to accomplish is to recognize and respect the First Amendment rights of demonstrators and counter demonstrators, to let them come and exercise their rights, but to do so in a safe way that's safe for everybody.
Okay, so here's my real question. A right-wing extremist group is coming to our city to hold a rally. I'm organizing a counter protest. This is hypothetical, of course. I've never engaged in violent protest, but a group that the city has decided has engaged in violent protests attaches themselves to my event or expresses an intention to show up. So is my protest shut down?
You're -- and Robert Taylor, Deputy City Attorney, in that example, your demonstration would not be shut down. What the police commissioner could do under this ordinance, if all three of those criteria are met, he could designate an area for demonstrators and an area for counter demonstrators so that both groups can have their opportunity to demonstrate and counter-demonstrate each other.
Okay, so I shouldn't have said "shut down," but my ability to hold my counter protest would be impacted by this ordinance if a group that I have no relationship to and had not invited as an organizer expresses an intent to be there.
If it meets that criteria, if that other group, that counter-demonstrating group that attaches itself to yours, does that, then the police commissioner could, if those criteria are met, implement those reasonable time, place, manner regulations and ask that groups go to certain locations in the city.
So this illustrates one of my main concerns with this ordinance, which is, I'm organizing a counter protest. I want to be within sight and hearing of the people who I am protesting against, and if the city doesn't allow me to do that, then that impacts my constitutional rights despite the fact that I am a peaceful protester. And that has a chilling effect on my -- on my right to free speech, assembly, and protest.
And if I might respond to that, again, this is Robert Taylor, Chief Deputy City Attorney. That's why in the ordinance, we say that any redirection of the demonstrators and counter demonstrators has to be to a reasonably close location, and you have to have substantially the same access to your intended audience. And a good example of this has come up in the discussion around this, where in one of the previous demonstrations, there was demonstrators in one park and then right across the street, counter demonstrators. And that was a very difficult and volatile situation, and trying to manage that situation the day of, the result was they had to close that park and move people to another park. And learning from that lesson, what this ordinance would allow the police commissioner to do, if we saw that coming again, would be to say, demonstrators can be in this park, the park in the middle will just be closed to everybody, it's a no protest zone, and then counter demonstrators can be in the other park. And so you would still be within sight and earshot of the other group that you're wishing to counter-demonstrate, but we could plan for that in advance and let people know in advance where they're safe to go. And if we do that, and it's successful, the police won't have to try to manage it day of and try to close a park while there are people in it. That's one of the goals, and I think one of the lessons that folks have tried to learn from these past demonstrations.
Okay, I understand. It's not a comforting answer, though. I mean, I certainly anticipate underhanded tactics by some of these groups, where either they pose online as opposition, or they come and pose as opposition on the counter protest side, and they provoke -- they either provoke this intervention beforehand, or they provoke the police. I just -- I'm going to save the rest of my questions for later, but thank you for answering me.
Commissioner Fritz.
Thank you, Mayor. And could I just ask that we don't do the clicking? I find it really distracting. Could you do, as was requested in the request at the beginning, to use hand signals rather than the clicking? My questions, and I'll have to keep them brief because I do want to get to public testimony as soon as possible. Can demonstrators challenge the written orders like an appeal process?
The -- there could not -- there would not be an appeal process other than we would -- the police commissioner would issue the written orders with the written findings, and then if people believe that that is an overreach or unreasonable, that could be challenged in court on an injunction. And that happens in other instances in other cities where they've imposed time, place, manner restrictions, for example. So that's a common way that these get challenged. And then the other way that they might be challenged is if there is a criminal prosecution that results.
Okay, thank you for the answer. What's the thinking behind the one-year sunset?
Again, it's Robert Taylor, Chief Deputy City Attorney. That was something that was requested by concerned stakeholders, and the idea is, I believe, to give the tool a chance to see if it works.
There isn't anything magic about the year?
No, there's nothing magic about the year. It was -- we -- there were -- I thought it would be good to put a specific date, just so everybody knew what the rules were and when it would expire.
Well, I'm certainly pleased to see a sunset. Mayor, my last question is for you. We know that arrests that have been made in previous demonstrations have rarely resulted in prosecution. Have you had discussions with the district attorney regarding this proposal and how you and the district attorney would work together?
I have. Thank you for the question. I have had conversations with the district attorney about this specific proposal. The district attorney's primary objection, and I don't mean to speak for him, he can certainly speak for himself, was the inclusion of a specific penalty. That has been withdrawn, that has been removed from the ordinance in the substitute ordinance. He further stated that ultimately, the constitutionality depends upon the strength of the written order. And he and I talked about the possibility of there being a back-and-forth and helping to ensure that the written order is drafted to his satisfaction, and he seemed open to doubt opportunity as well.
So you would show it to the district attorney as you're drafting it?
I think I'd be foolish not to.
Great, thank you.
So I had a question about what makes a permitted event exempt from this proposed ordinance? What is it about having a permit that somehow doesn't result in the same sort of scenarios that you've been seeing happen? Maybe that's directed at the chief or Mr. Taylor, whoever. Maybe that's directed to the chief or Mr. Taylor, whoever.
Robert Taylor, Chief Deputy City Attorney. That's a good question, Commissioner Saltzman. So, many cities rely exclusively on the permitting process to impose their time, place, manner regulations on demonstrations and counter demonstrations. And that can lead to a situation, for example, if one group gets a permit, they're okay. Counter demonstrators don't get a permit, the police might be in the position of having to break up that entire counter demonstration. And that's not something that Portland has historically done. And this would give the tools, however, to impose reasonable time, place, manner regulations for demonstrators and counter demonstrators, so everybody gets to exercise their First Amendment rights, but to do so in a way that is safe for participants and bystanders and the public.
But I thought the mayor said at the outset that this ordinance does not apply to permitted events.
Correct. So I guess I'm a boss. Correct, yes. So, I'll give you an example where, again, it's Robert Taylor, Chief Deputy City Attorney. If we did have a situation where one group got a permit and there are counter demonstrators that have announced their intent to come and counter demonstrate, and those groups meet the criteria in this ordinance, those strict criteria in the ordinance, then the mayor could issue time, place, manner regulations governing that event.
Both groups.
Both groups.
Both groups.
The permitted group—
Regardless of the permit.
Correct. And the permitted group, it would probably be, proceed under your permit. Counter demonstrators, proceed in this manner. And we could, again, give the public advanced notice so everybody knows where to go and demonstrate peacefully.
Okay, so having a permit does not exempt you potentially from the application of this proposed ordinance?
Yeah, you would—we would take the permit into account when issuing the reasonable time, place, manner regulations. So the—in that instance I described where one group got a permit and another didn't, the written order from the police chief—or from the police commissioner would make all the factual findings, say that this group got a permit, direct that that group strictly follow their permit, and direct the other group to this location to peacefully demonstrate. Okay, thanks. Very good, thank you. Appreciate it. Next panel, I'm gonna ask—and by the way, we have two more panels, one panel I would describe as generally supportive. We have another panel, we wanted to make sure—even though I— Commissioner Fish.
I'm just going off the run of show, your office together. And I believe before the invited testimony, it was your intention to offer the substitute ordinance?
Let me do it afterwards, only because I know that some folks who are invited need to leave pretty soon, so let me put the substitute on the table after—the invited testimony, if you don't mind.
Okay, the only downside of that is that we may be limited in the feedback we get from our invited guests to what is actually on the table, and not everyone in the room is aware of what's in the substitute.
Very good. Carla, on the substitute, please call the role and put the substitute ordinance on the table.
Mr. Mayor, I think you need a motion and then a second.
I move the substitute ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, please call the role.
Udaley?
To be clear, this does not signal my support for this ordinance. I'm voting aye for the sake of discussion.
Fritz?
Likewise, I may support amendments but have not decided to support the ordinance. Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The substitute ordinance is now under discussion. The next panel—let's see, where was I? I wanted to say that we have intentionally invited—you know, obviously I support this, or I wouldn't bring it to the council, but I want to make sure my colleagues have a balanced set of facts and information. And so, we have also created a panel of people who I think would be generally very skeptical of this ordinance. So the first panel, Janelle Bynum, who is our state representative for House District 51, that's East Portland, Andrew Hohn, who is the head of the Portland Business Alliance, and Steve Falsick from Travel Portland. Excuse me. I hope that is the last time we will hear somebody hiss or express their opposition to somebody in this chamber. You get to express your point of view at those microphones when you are called upon, and everybody has the ability to do that. So let's please be respectful of people, per the council rules that we all heard earlier. Welcome, Representative Bynum. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Mayor Wheeler, commissioners, members of the public, good afternoon. My name is State Representative Janelle Bynum. I represent the residents of House District 51 in the Oregon State Legislature of East Portland, and I am a business owner in Southeast Portland. I'm here before you today because I support the mayor's attempt to address the violent protests and the consequences borne by city residents and businesses. While I am not a constitutional scholar versed in the intimate details of the policy, I come here today to discuss principles, expected outcomes, and potential supports from the legislative branch. On principle, I believe we should protect freedom of speech, no matter how popular or unpopular. I also believe we have become too tolerant of hate speech. Its impact on our communities and our children cannot be underestimated. But the issue today, to me, is not hate speech. The issue today is how do we set in place clear guidelines for protest that protect life, liberty, and property? We must also consider how our precious financial resources are used and how we are able to deliver law enforcement protection to areas who desperately need it most, like the citizens of House District 51. Please consider that this current environment is a Petri dish for this growing cancer of behavior that is destroying our city, taxing our resources, and putting our residents at risk. We are diverting police support from taxpaying residents and businesses who cannot receive services at the same response rate because officers are deployed downtown. In my district, from October 2017 to 18, the average police response time was 37 minutes. The city average is 26 minutes. Who's not getting justice? My constituents. I have four of the top 15 neighborhoods impacted by car theft: Lentz, Powellhurst, Gilbert, Centennial, and Foster Powell. We need support. When you take away our resources, you are causing more pain in the lives of citizens who are as deserving as anyone else. Regarding the ordinance, here are some of my concerns and opportunities. I believe the one-year sunset is too long. I'd like to see a policy that allows for careful reconsideration at intervals that are not subject to political whims, but also allow for thoughtful debate. And I propose 60 or 90 days. Number two, in enacting this ordinance, you need assistance from the legislature with policy that would clear hurdles and address issues. Please know that I'm interested in being a constructive ally. Number three, if there are constitutional issues that need to be addressed and it is fitting for the people to consider them, please place those on the table as well. It is not enough to say, "That's not constitutional." Slavery was legal, but we addressed it. Women voting was not constitutional, but we addressed it. It may be a heavy lift, but for the sake of our city and our state, bold decisions need to be made and work needs to be done. We just passed a constitutional amendment for affordable housing. The legislature considered it, the people voted on it. It is done. Fourth, if there is room for an executive order, ask the governor. Let us employ every legal resource we have to deal with this issue. In closing, I urge you to take a step forward in a process that should be iterative and constructive. I stand with you to work with groups that have concerns, but ultimately, this policy must serve all the residents and business owners of Portland. We desperately need to start somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative—
Mayor, if I could for a second?
Commissioner Fish.
Representative Bynum, first of all, congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
I have to say, as a frequent watcher of cable TV, I saw more ads involving your race than—the only other race that got the same attention was the governor's race, and congratulations on your effort. And just to preview, number one on your list of concerns was the sunset. As soon as we have the two panels complete their testimony, I will offer an amendment to change the sunset date in response to the concern you and others have raised, and thank you for putting that on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. I know you have an appointment that you need to go to, so if you need to leave, feel free to go ahead and get up and go. And thank you and congratulations.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And I heard your offer of support and help, and I appreciate it, and will follow up on that for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I am—I'm going to stay for the Portland Business Alliance to be here. This is—Andrew's brand new here. I know it's not his first rodeo, but I just want to make sure that the legislature is supportive of you as a city and is supportive of the businesses in our community. So if that's okay—
Of course, Representative, you bet.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and commissioners, and to the public, of course, to my fellow panelists. My name is Andrew Hohn, and I am the president and CEO of the Portland Business Alliance, which is Greater Portland's Chamber of Commerce. Our organization represents around 1,900 small, medium, and large businesses throughout the Portland metro area. And we work every single day to ensure that our region's residents have access to stable, family-wage jobs, quality educational opportunities, and a high standard of living. As leading voice for business in the region, I am here this afternoon to state for the record that we support Mayor Wheeler's protest safety ordinance and efforts to keep our city's civic discourse safe and free from violence. We will support any measure that both simultaneously protects our constitutional right to free speech while preventing behaviors that put our residents at risk. First and foremost, the alliance unequivocally supports every American's First Amendment rights to free speech and peaceful assembly, and would never condone any perceived infringement on those rights. We are fully confident that Mayor Wheeler is following legal precedent set forth by federal courts and other major cities around the nation. Portland's business community is seriously concerned about the increasing amount of violence unfolding on our streets, in front of our stores and inside our public spaces. Not only does this unnecessary violence threaten the physical safety and emotional well-being of the employees and employers we represent, but it has real economic impacts that are felt by small and large businesses alike. When property is damaged, when physical violence occurs in front of our business, when racist or inflammatory graffiti is painted on our walls or in our parks, our community hurts. More must be done, and this ordinance—and with this ordinance, more can be done, to prevent such acts before they occur. The alliance is committed to building bridges and collaborating with local government and fellow community organizations to make our city a better, safer place to live, work, and raise a family. While, of course, disagreements on policy are frequent here in Portland, we can all agree that hatred and violence have no place within our city, and we absolutely condemn the inflammatory actions of those seeking to dismantle productive community dialogue. Indeed, in September, after policemen and protesters alike had been hospitalized after such incidents, the alliance spoke out alongside environmentalists, labor unions, and others to make a public statement calling for more civility and how we discuss and debate important issues, and to demonstrate our collective disappointment with recent violent behavior. This consistent threat to our community transcends politics and demands action. Approving this ordinance will allow the mayor and chief outlaw necessary authority to be proactive and mitigate violent protests, and in so doing, help all of us avoid personal harm and significant damage to public and private property. We are further encouraged by provision to review the ordinance after implementation, which provides for a sunsetting should perceived constitutional concerns turn into reality. This form of iterative policymaking with thoughtful flexibility does not limit free speech rights. This advances the doctrine of peaceable assembly. Safety must be our collective priority. We understand this is a sensitive issue from your perspective, and you have the obligation to balance the rights of all citizens, regardless of extremist views. But we believe violence should never be tolerated, and common sense must win out. That is why we strongly urge you to continue working to a viable law. I just want to recognize how challenging this conversation is. This is not an easy decision, and this is certainly a moment among elected officials that you'll certainly be looking back upon. And I want to acknowledge that and really encourage you to continue the conversation. It's worth having, we all deserve it, and I want to thank you. And we're here to help in any manner, shape, or form.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler, members of council. My name is Steve Falsick. I am chief sales officer for Travel Portland, which is the destination marketing and management organization for our fine city. We're here today to lend our support to the mayor's proposed ordinance. Travel Portland's mission is to generate travel demand that drives economic impact for Portland. We take seriously our role as both promoter and steward of this evolving city and its progressive values, which have the power to transform the travelers who visit us. The tourism industry in the Portland region market represents $5.1 billion in direct spending and over $133 million in local taxes. The travel industry supports 35,000 jobs in the Portland area, and in 2017, the region welcomed 8.6 million overnight trips. The reason I share these statistics with you is to put emphasis on the impact of being a desirable tourism destination, what it has on local taxes, jobs, earnings, and quality of life. We have enjoyed significant visitor growth over the past seven years in particular, due in no small part to Portland being a safe and welcoming destination. Five of the last seven years saw double-digit growth in lodging tax collections, which comes out to an increase of more than $16 million per year, being added to the lodging tax collections that go to the city's general fund. Travel Portland supports Mayor Wheeler's efforts to prioritize the safety of residents, visitors, and demonstrators, as well as our uniformed officers through the ordinance he is proposing to the broader commission today. Portland is a brand as much as it is a place. Progressive values and our known commitment to civic engagement have long lived alongside the fact that Portland is a safe and welcoming place for visitors. Recurring national and international coverage of demonstrations that have escalated to a level of significant and visual violence is putting the very values, welcoming attitude, and overall perception of Portland as a safe place to visit in jeopardy. Following recent protests that have received national media attention, we have received a heightened number of complaints to both our visitor information center as well as our offices directly. A significant part of our work is around the recruitment and booking of large-scale conventions into the Oregon Convention Center, with delegates staying for multiple nights in our hotels. A single convention can have an estimated economic impact of several million dollars in direct spending in our city. In the last few months alone, we have had to prepare meeting planners with messaging around scheduled protests and respond to future delicate safety concerns based on seeing national media coverage of Portland as a lawless and unsafe city. Because being perceived as an unsafe city is not an easy narrative to reverse, and because the physical safety of our visitors and hospitality employees is of utmost concern, we support the mayor's desire to set time, place, and manner regulations, as has been done successfully in other destinations. Most of us in the room have likely traveled to other destinations seeking escape, new experience, and exposure to a place's people, culture, and local offerings. Imagine now getting a message from the hotel you are staying at communicating to you that the building is on indefinite lockdown due to protests in the surrounding area that are unpredictable in route and scope. You, along with staff, cannot leave or return to the property, and a level of fear naturally sets in. This is happening at downtown hotels, and this creates a scenario where several hundred guests take this negative experience from Portland back to share with friends and colleagues. This is one of the numerous ways the positivity that should come from a visit to Portland is being severely compromised. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Portland visitors, the local business community impacted by visitor spending, and our network of business partners in Portland.
Thank you. Commissioner Udaley?
I have a comment, maybe a question. Thank you for coming here today, and I certainly appreciate your testimony and understand some of your concerns, but I want to make it clear that thousands of our community members who live in Portland live in fear because of the uprising of bigotry and hatred and racism being brought upon our city. So while I'm certainly sympathetic to tourists, they're not my primary concern. And the real threat are right-wing extremists coming to our city and intimidating, threatening, and committing violence against our residents. And I hate to think what that threat would look like if no one was standing up to them. So I just want to put it out there that—I mean, this is—we So I just want to put it out there that, I mean, this is, we have these rights for a reason. It's because free speech and assembly and protest are essential to our democracy. So I certainly want to work with you to address these concerns, but just wanted to give you a different perspective.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Our last panel is Kimberly McCullough from the ACLU of Oregon, Beth Wooton from the National Lawyers Guild, and in making her first appearance in this chamber as Commissioner-elect, Joanne Hardesty. Welcome and thank you for being here.
Mayor Wheeler and council members, thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I do want to let you know that I have fairly extensive comments, which I'm going to try to get through quickly. I have submitted written testimony to the clerk, so she can distribute that to you all. I'm also happy to answer questions. I know a lot of this is complex constitutional law, and I also have Matt DeSantos, our legal director, here in case we need to pitch-hit on some of those questions. Before addressing the ordinance, I want to acknowledge that we share concerns about the safety of our communities and the desire to make Portland an inclusive and equitable city. And we don't want to downplay the challenges that we're facing or suggest that we sit idly by when violence occurs in our streets. At the same time, we have deep concerns about this ordinance being presented as a solution to the challenges we face. And because we have such deep concerns, we urge you to change course and not adopt it. We believe it will lead us down a path of rights violations and costly litigation. As to our specific concerns, we have constitutional concerns and concerns as a matter of policy. At the outset, we are hard-pressed to see how this will actually prevent violence from occurring or reduce the use of law enforcement resources and police enforcement. Despite the suggestion that the imposition of these rules will reduce violence, we failed to see how that's actually going to be accomplished and instead have numerous questions. For example, if a person is willing to violate our criminal laws against assault, are they really going to follow these rules about when and where and with how many people they can protest? If someone comes to our city with an intent of causing harm, and they do follow the rules, is it going to stop them from engaging in violence or problematic behavior at or near the free speech zone or in other parts of our city? It's also hard to understand how the ordinance that gives government additional authority to enforce new rules is somehow going to lead to reduced enforcement. It really is just creating another avenue for enforcement. And the fact that violence has occurred at permitted events with associated time, place, and manner regulations begs the question of whether these new rules will actually stop violence from occurring. We understand that the city's attorney's office believes the ordinance is constitutional, but we respectfully disagree. The problem is, we can't just say that reasonable content-neutral time, place, and manner regulations are constitutional and end our analysis there. With these kinds of regulations, the devil is in the details, and those details are incredibly problematic here. There are cases cited in the ordinance. We've also been provided with an additional list of case law that supposedly provides justification for this ordinance, but we have read all of those cases. They are all legally distinguishable with extremely different facts, and none of them deals with an ordinance like what we're looking at here. And the ACLU of Oregon is not alone in pointing to those constitutional concerns. I'm sure you've seen the recent media where there were three separate constitutional law professors at reputable institutions that all raised serious concerns with the ordinance. And I think it's important to note that none of us have had sufficient time to analyze this under Article 1, Section 8 and 26 of our state constitution, which provides even a more protection for free speech and assembly. As does some of those constitutional concerns, it suffers from overbreadth and vagueness. It also gives too much power and discretion to city officials, centralizing the power to dictate conditions on the exercise of our free speech rights in a single official. I think as a matter of policy, when we're thinking about this, we need to think not only about our present circumstances, but the future. We should ask ourselves how this power can be used and whether we can trust everyone who will use it to use that discretion appropriately. We also need to think about other locations that may copy this ordinance and whether or not copying that ordinance would lead to bad results in a different place. In addition, imposing legal consequences based on a city official's judgment that a group has engaged in a history of violence or has a likelihood of committing violence is extremely problematic. As an initial matter, it's unconstitutional to retaliate against protesters for past protest activity, and there is a heavy presumption against the validity of prior restraint on speech. In addition, in our society, we're entitled to due process and a presumption of innocence, both of which are absent here. Checks on official discretion are extremely important to prevent overreach and dubious findings of violence based on bias against particular groups. That's exactly why this ordinance risks being found to not be content-neutral. All of this also raises questions about how judgments about groups of protesters will be made. Is there going to be a list? Is the list going to be public? How do you challenge those findings? How do you get off the list? It reminds me a lot of our gang enforcement lists. On a related note, this also creates a dangerous problem that it will lead to a heckler's veto, which is unconstitutional. Creating a heckler's veto means that if one group decides that they're going to go cause problems at somebody else's protest, that somehow then they're able to impact that other group's protest rights. And again, that is not a content-neutral limitation on protest. In addition, the fact that the ordinance is aimed at specific groups of people is problematic because government should not be in the business of punishing groups of people for the past or present actions of a few people. We have deep concerns about how police will know who is and isn't part of these groups, and we certainly hope we don't have to remind everyone that we do have laws against tracking people's political affiliations. All of this raises even more concerns about how groups will be regulated as a practical matter. So when there is a protest, who is and isn't in the group? Does every single protest have to go to all the protest zones? I think Commissioner U. Daley was getting at this a little bit earlier. So what if you have a completely unrelated protest on the same day? What if it's related to the same subject matter, but it's on the same day? Are you then supposed to go to these free speech zones? It becomes extremely problematic, I think, to try to figure out how that actually plays out. There are also limits on the number of people who can go to a protest, and I am really confused about how that would work. We also have deep concerns about the potential for criminal sanctions. Appreciate that the ordinance that is now before us doesn't have the six months in jail, but we still have questions because it says that there are potentially associated criminal penalties, but it doesn't say what they are, which is deeply concerning. And that potential for criminal charges could have a chilling effect on people's exercise of their rights. So this long list of concerns, I think, should be a strong indication that this will lead to costly litigation. There are a lot of things our community needs our time and resources for. Instead of diverting those resources into legal battles, we should be working together to create tangible changes that will truly help protect our communities. I have a long list of things the city could do instead of passing this ordinance, but I'm going to reserve that and say that I do appreciate the opportunity to engage in these conversations with you all. Happy to continue to engage in these conversations and try to find some better solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor? Commissioner Fish.
Kimberly, do we have a copy of that?
I sent it to the clerk just maybe like 10 minutes ago or so. I was proofreading, sorry.
So I'm going to ask if the mayor's staff, if the mayor's staff could track it down because there's additional stuff you weren't able to get to.
Yeah.
I have a number of questions I wanted to ask you, but what I'm going to do is wait till all three panelists have concluded their testimony, then I'll ask the mayor if I can have a few minutes to ask you some questions.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and commissioners. My name is Beth Wooton, for the record, but I'm here representing the Portland National Lawyers Guild. I'm going to try to keep to three minutes, but I may go a little over since I'm representing an organization. So I'm speaking on behalf of the Portland chapter of the National Lawyers Guild, legal workers, lawyers, law students, and jailhouse lawyers engaged in the cause of collective liberation. One of our many projects is protester support for anti-oppression movements. That includes legal observing, the famous green hats, as well as jail support. We understand the desire to stop right-wing violence brought to our city by Patriot Prayer and the Proud Boys. However, we view this ordinance as exactly what Patriot Prayer wants, an opportunity to enlarge the police state that has repeatedly attacked counter-demonstrators of their rallies. This ordinance does three things, and it changes to the criteria, I don't believe change our analysis or concerns. One, it allows the city to arbitrarily place individuals into ill-defined groups. It polices the language of protest to craft what will undoubtedly be overreaching protest restriction, and it enables post hoc justifications for police violence against protesters. Generally, it is true that time, place, manner restrictions are valid exercises of state power per the First Amendment. However, when police are left to enforce these restrictions, counter-demonstrators get hurt. We and so many others have observed this. P P B chooses to send us all they've got. They line up predominantly facing the counter-demonstrators and separate the factions. Sometimes with no provocation, the police violently disperse the counter-demonstrators. Most recently, on August 4th, counter-demonstrators nearly got killed by police weapons and tactics. We refute many of the factual conclusions made by the ordinance describing these protests. No one but police deploy flashbang grenades, full-strength pepper spray, pepper ball projectiles, and other impact weapons that amount to use of deadly force. The ordinance activates when, quote, "when two or more groups have announced plans to demonstrate separately but on the same day, and there is a history of violence between the groups." How will P P B determine who or what a group is? Does someone who likes or comments or is interested in a Facebook event then become a part of the group? These counter-demonstrators aren't organized by traditional notions of groups. People show up and they go to protest because they're passionate about an idea and they want to stand up for it. They don't care who organized the event. They want to challenge the Kavanaugh hearing or stand up to Patriot Prayer. But given the vagueness of the ordinance, if a person wants to exercise their right to demonstrate, would that right be curtailed simply by a Proud Boy on Facebook saying he also wants to show up? This is precisely what Joey Gibson wants. Patriot Prayer wants the city to scramble any and every time he makes a peep on social media. The Portland Police Bureau has shown time after time that they do not focus on individual actors, but instead broadly cast demonstrators as lawbreakers to justify use of force. This ordinance will exacerbate that pattern by creating another layer of restrictions that many demonstrators may not even likely be aware of or understand. How do these written orders get dispersed? Once the written orders are broken, then will P P B have the opportunity to kick our butts or kick the butts of counter-demonstrators, as Chief Outlaw put it in her Lars Larson interview? It's of note that the ordinance cites the Menotti decision to justify its validity. That case came after police actions at the WTO protests in Seattle, reviewing a city ordinance that blocked protest activities where world leaders were gathering. While the Ninth Circuit upheld the ordinance following a facial constitutional challenge, that was not the whole story of the case. The court found that the individual, as applied challenges to the ordinance's enforcement could proceed to trial. That case was ultimately settled. Seattle's then-chief of police, Norm Stamper, has since recanted the decision to clear protesters with tear gas. As here, this ordinance will just invite further violent police suppression of speech as well as encourage lengthy costly litigation. These are important considerations since the ordinance will allow the city to limit the number of protesters at a demonstration. You might think it's incumbent on counter-demonstrators to just not show up, but that's irresponsible and ignorant of the history of fascist movements, which thrive on public normalization of their activities. This testimony is a broad outline. The Guild will be writing and submitting to your offices a legal memorandum detailing our concerns. We urge this council to reject this ordinance and understand that the community has been shocked and injured by the actions of the Portland Police Bureau at these protests. Rather than provide legal cover to state-sanctioned violence, we need to consider proactive alternatives to the threat of right-wing violence. But thank you for your time.
Mr. Walsh, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, commissioners, for the record. I am Joanne Hardesty, Commissioner-elect. I want to thank you, Mayor, and city council members for the opportunity to speak on this ordinance. I am a child of the civil rights movement. As a child of the civil rights movement, I am very aware of the need to counter racist stereotypical mantras that are meant to incite people to violence. I have been extremely disappointed in watching how Portland Police Bureau has responded to out-of-town hate groups who show up and take over our downtown streets. I believe after the August 4th protests, we were told that both you, Mayor Wheeler, and Chief Outlaw were going to independently investigate why nurses were injured, why reporters were injured, why regular people who I would hope all of us would want to stand up to hate groups, why they were injured by our police. What we know from video coverage is the police don't always tell the truth. There was no video showing counter-protesters attacking police. In fact, ultimately, the reason given was that they had to get back to their cars, and they had blocked themselves in. In 2017, before the Max stabbings, the gentleman responsible for that marched down 82nd Avenue with a police escort, a Portland Police Bureau escort, they were also escorted out of my community so that they could safely leave. When you look at the pictures of what is taking place in this community, the police have been a tool in the past, certainly from my childhood, of brutalizing people standing up for their civil rights. As I see this rise of white nationalists in this city, for the first time in my life, I am fearful when a pickup truck with an American flag rolls up near me. I look for the nearest exit. What is my exit strategy? We are a city known for protests. We even survived the George Bush years. We are known for making space for people to protest what they want to protest. It is our right as Americans, it is our obligation to stand up against hate. Because if the brave children, and men and women, had not stood up in the '60s, when people that look like me were just trying to register to vote, trying to get decent housing, trying to get decent education, if we had not stood up, just because that was the law at the time, it was not a just law. I want to encourage you to slow down this ordinance, and let's have some community meetings in January when I join you, so that we can talk to the community about how we keep everybody safe. It's important for you to understand that we don't all experience the police the same way. When white women protest, the police come out with cameras and pussy hats and smiles. When African-Americans and other people of color and people with less power protest, they come out in full riot gear. We cannot have a police force for white people and then a police force for everybody else. I would hope that we would take all the testimony today and slow this way, way, way down. I want you to know I trust Chief Outlaw. I believe that she has built a good team, but she is absolutely mistaken to think that we should give the police chief power to decide who protests, when, where, and how. And so thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I look forward to working with you to make sure all of us can feel safe when encountering Portland police officers, because that is not today, but I hope it is in the real near future. Thank you.
Welcome and thank you. Colleagues, any questions for this panel? Commissioner Fish.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First, I want to just acknowledge that prior to this hearing, a number of organizations reached out to my office, and I had a chance to either speak with them directly or through my senior staff, Georgetown Law Center, Brennan Institute, Urban League, Oregon Justice Resource Center, Western State Center, CARE Oregon, ACLU, to name some. And so... And so, I don't want to repeat those conversations, they've been helpful. I do want to ask Kimberly McCulloch a number of questions, and if the mayor would give me two or three minutes.
Absolutely.
And if it is, Kimberly, if it's your preference to follow up in writing with any of these questions, I urge you to do so, because we've got a little time, we're not voting today. And so, I want to make sure I get the full benefit of your views. Now, I was not involved in the, either the research or the preparation of this ordinance. So when I hear my friends at the ACLU say that you're scrambling to do an analysis, take a look at the, both the federal questions and the state law questions, you're not alone. And all of us would like to get that right, like to make sure we're looking at the right law and we're following the right guidelines. And obviously, one of the questions that could come before the council is, can this ordinance be strengthened? We'll hear from others that there's no way that this can be strengthened, it just needs to be withdrawn, but I mean, there's a range of views we've heard. So, in the spirit of making sure I understand your views, and I have not had the benefit of reading your testimony in detail, which I will again after the hearing, here's a few questions I wanted to ask you. The case that the city attorney's office has relied most heavily on is called Manotti versus City of Seattle. And you can Google it and download it, and it's long, but I really encourage people to read it, because whether you agree with the case or not, and whether you agree with the ordinance or not, it's the roadmap that the city attorney's office used to craft this ordinance. So we have the benefit of standards set forth by a court. And I just want to make clear, do you and the ACLU believe Manotti is still good law?
There is a question about whether or not Manotti is still good law based on more recent precedent, but I think that's sort of less important than the fact that the facts that gave rise to that case were just absolutely and completely different than this circumstance. So, if I could just describe that really quickly, there, the underlying ordinance was an emergency ordinance that authorized the declaration of emergency. We actually have that same ordinance here already in the city of Portland, and that what happened was there was a declaration of emergency that imposed a curfew on the city of Seattle. I was actually there when that happened and lived right next to the curfew zone, and was actually forced out of downtown. So anyhow, it was imposed in response to actions that were actually taking place. My colleague actually explained what ended up happening with that, but I think it's important to note that the city of Seattle ended up paying millions of dollars in settlements because of that action. In addition, I think it's also important to note that it was really not anything any of us would call good policing. They used tear gas on tens of thousands of peaceful protesters because a few people smashed some windows. In addition, when I heard that this was based on a Seattle ordinance, I actually reached out to our colleagues in Seattle and said, "What the heck is this?" And they were baffled, frankly. And then they came back to me and they said, "Well, it's interesting that this is being raised, because recently, the city of Seattle tried to impose some insurance rules on protesters based on past violence and a prediction that they would engage in violence." And the ACLU of Washington contacted them and explained why a number of different cases, including particularly Forsyth is sort of the ruling case there, that it is unconstitutional for them to do that. And the city of Seattle has actually suspended those rules and is considering rescinding them entirely. So, they're actually moving the opposite.
Those rules about requiring insurance?
Based on past violence and a prediction of violence. That's correct.
So, I would welcome.
Excuse me, just one second. Could I just interrupt for one second? Could you please turn the light off on the back, because I can't look at the speakers with the light shining right in my eyes, I get migraines.
He's getting the light.
You're certainly welcome to film it.
It's hard demonic energy in here.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I had the same feeling, Commissioner Fritz, so thank you for that.
So did I.
Well, if in your supplemental materials.
I'm a interpreter too, and an argumentative for a while as well, so having a hard time staring at that light definitely has been bothering as well, so I just wanted to.
So, thank you. And if in your follow-up materials.
Yeah.
There were additional cases you want us to look at, welcome that. One of the themes of this hearing and materials that I've received are sort of a debate about whether the existing tools that are at the disposal of the police commissioner and the police chief are adequate, and whether there are additional tools that are constitutional that could help us meet what I think is a shared goal, which is to minimize violence and make the opportunity for peaceful protest as robust as possible. Does your testimony outline any additional tools that you're encouraging us to consider?
Yes, it does. In particular, we've heard this idea that if there are credible threats of violence, that somehow law enforcement is supposed to just sort of stand back and not do anything. If there are actual credible threats of violence, we think that law enforcement should follow up and should investigate and should try to prevent folks who are actually creating a clear intent that they're going to engage in violence to do so. We definitely encourage separating of groups that are engaged in conflict at a protest, and we've actually seen Portland police do that well in some instances. And in fact, the example that was brought up of the protesters being across the street from each other, aside from the fact that law enforcement was facing all one direction, which sent a very odd message, we actually thought that that protest was going well at that point. Of course, then the kettling happened after that, which was problematic, but that's aside from that point. We do also think that, you know, when people commit acts of violence, that there are ways to hold them accountable, and those accountability mechanisms actually can prevent future violence. For example, you know, in the civil context, restraining orders can restrict a person's movement. If a person is convicted of an assault crime or some other violent crime, they can be subjected to probation conditions. You know, we obviously have concerns about overcriminalization of our communities, but when people actually engage in acts of violence, I think we expect there to be some response. In addition, we are a little bit confused about why there are some pretty well-documented instances where people have engaged in violence in our city that have not been appropriately dealt with. A little bit perplexed about that. And I think this all raises another question, and I think my colleagues actually like raised this as well, which is that there has been many instances throughout the history of our city of the safety of our communities actually being endangered by police response to protest. And so, if we're serious about addressing the safety of our communities, we need to talk about things like the use of crowd control weapons, what sort of de-escalation techniques we're using, and what kind of training law enforcement have to actually respond to protests in a peaceful manner.
Thank you. Let me hold you there for a sec. I'll read your testimony, and I'll follow up. Mayor, if I could just have a couple more questions, this is enormously helpful for me. We did a little survey, and some of the groups we met with helped us on this, and we looked at places like New York, Denver, St. Paul, and others that had versions of a tool that the mayor is seeking. Some look very suspiciously very similar to the tool the mayor. Have you had a chance to canvass other cities and to determine whether, in the implementation of those ordinances or rules that are at least first cousins of what the mayor is proposing, whether they have been determined to raise constitutional issues?
So, the closest things I've seen are things that are actually similar to laws that we already have on the books around permitting and the regulations that can be imposed on permits. I have yet to see an ordinance that looks like this. If someone can give me an example of one of those, I would love to be able to reach out to our affiliate in whatever other location.
We will.
And get their analysis, but I've seen a list of supposedly similar ordinances, and they're quite distinct, in my legal opinion.
So, let me follow up. What you just said about permitting is very important, because as it turns out, and New York City's been in the news recently, they actually take a hard line if you don't get a permit, and they will take arrests of groups that don't get a permit. And historically, Portland has not done that. We have avoided taking mass arrests of people that don't get a permit, and there are a number of groups in the last couple of years that have said, really as a statement of principle, they're not going to get a permit. So, we have to make a decision. Does the ACLU have a view about whether our current hands-off practice about allowing people to protest without a permit needs revisions?
I'd like to pass on giving you a firm answer on that, and I think that's something that, you know, I would like to discuss with other folks and get back to you.
I'll come back to you on that.
But I will say that I did reach out to sort of our National List Serve of affiliates and asked folks, you know, are there other jurisdictions that are doing this well? Because I would love to be able to point the city to some good examples. And folks at our New York affiliate actually wrote me back this morning and said, "There are good and bad things happening here," and that they'd be happy to talk. So, I think that we can engage in some of these conversations about what's working other places. I would love to be able to give you, you know, to point you to a place that's doing this well.
Last question, and I appreciate your patience and thoughtfulness. Let's say, under one scenario here, based on all the testimony we get and the input, the mayor proposes some additional changes to narrow the scope of this ordinance and to address constitutional concerns, but it's still, you still have concerns, National Lawyer Guild still has concerns, other groups still have concerns. What that could set up is a fight, either, once an order is issued and the city attorney said that a written order, someone could go to court and seek an injunction, or probably more likely, when someone's arrested and the arrest is challenged under the order. This will get to federal court very quickly, it'll go to state court, then go to federal court, and in federal court, there'll be a debate about the constitutionality. So, a federal judge will look at it, and a federal judge may say, "I like this, I like this, but I have concerns about this." If out of that process came a stronger ordinance, what's the downside of that checks and balance? Since the system allows for judicial review, no matter what the council ultimately does, what's the ultimate downside in having a federal judge have the final say, particularly if it results in a strengthening of the ordinance?
The financial cost of litigation. It lasts for years and years and years and years. When you have groups like ours who are willing to engage with the city, who are trying to work with you to figure out what a good ordinance looks like, or what better policy looks like, because I don't actually think that this ordinance can be fixed. When we've got groups like us who are willing to work with you, I think it's better for us all to be partners. We don't need to be, you know, like head-to-head. I think we can be working together collaboratively to try to figure out something that doesn't end us up in court fighting each other there.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Commissioner Daley. I do have some questions, but I would need the chief and the city attorney to come back to the table.
Certainly. Great, thank you very much for your testimony, we appreciate it.
Thank you. So, there's often pressure to rush through these hearings. I think this conversation is too important to rush through, and this is an opportunity to put a lot of concerns on the record and to bring questions and concerns from the community. I am concerned with leaving enough time for public testimony, so I'd like to ask my colleagues who can stay past 5 o'clock.
I can stay till 5:30, I have a long planned.
Stay till 5:30.
Portland Bureau meeting that I have to get to.
It looks like we have a quorum at least till 5:30, and I think possibly beyond. So, I have been crossing out questions and trying to prioritize throughout this whole proceeding, because many of my questions have been answered, and just for the sake of time, if you don't know, just say you don't know, and you'll get back to me. If it's a yes or no, feel free to give me a yes or no, I won't think you're being curt, but here we go. In 1970, the Portland Police Bureau committed to not using violence on nonviolent protesters after a particularly violent crackdown on peaceful anti-Vietnam War protesters in the South Park blocks. I would like to know how many settlements we've had to make with protesters since then related to excessive use of force by police during demonstrations, and what the estimated cost of these suits were. Probably you're going to have to get back to me.
Robert Taylor, correct.
Yeah. How many pending lawsuits are there against the city from protesters or advocacy organizations for demonstrations between November 2016 and now? What is the estimated cost to the city to defend PPP in these lawsuits?
Robert Taylor, since October 2016, approximately 13 lawsuits have been filed. You have in-house lawyers in the city attorney's office, so there's no additional cost to defend those.
But it is costly, and it's time that they could be spending on other work, if I'm not mistaken.
That's.
Okay. In response to this proposed ordinance, Darrell Turner's recently, Darrell Turner, Police Union President, recently decried the overemphasis on de-escalation and disengagement. Is this view on de-escalation consistent with that of PPP leadership chief?
Danielle, our law chief of police, no it is not.
Thank you. How should we reconcile PPP's stated commitment to de-escalation with the numerous injuries we've witnessed on our streets, of which the most serious appear to be at the hands of the police? These injuries include third-degree chemical burns, open wounds, and at least one traumatic brain injury. Is that for me or for you? Is that for me?
That's what the city attorney. Robert Taylor, I would be happy to answer that. One of the goals of the ordinance is to try to manage these events in advance, so the police do not have to manage them the day of. And I think that's where August 4th is a good example of things that did not go well for anybody.
Okay. The next three questions are about dispersal orders, which I have found myself caught up in both before and after taking my seat on city council. What are the, and I'm going to read them together, and you can respond. What are the conditions that have to be in place for PPP to demand a dispersal order? Dispersal orders are often contradictory, difficult to understand, or given without enough time for people to respond. What is PPP doing to remedy this? And why do the police believe that after giving dispersal orders, people who remain are fair game to be subjected to violence even though they are not committing any violent act by remaining?
Ryan Lee, Assistant Chief of Police. The conditions to have PPP demand a dispersal order are outlined in Oregon Revised Statute 131.675. It's dispersal of unlawful or riotous assemblages. Essentially, when any five or more persons, whether armed or not, or unlawfully or riotously assembled, in a city, in our particular case, the police can issue an order, a command, to disperse. Failure to disperse is an illegal activity. Could you repeat your second part of that question?
What is PPP, I mean, okay, so I understand we have the law, but it's incredibly difficult to get hundreds, if not thousands, of people to disperse in a timely manner, or to effectively communicate the instructions to them. Also have an issue with the fact that hundreds or thousands of people can be involved in a peaceful protest, and five bad actors could cause the entire protest to require to disperse, and the failure to do so makes everyone engaged in criminal activity. That just doesn't seem reasonable or workable.
Commissioner, I'm stating to you what the standard for the law is. The police bureau holds themselves to a higher standard and abundance of caution when dealing with the public. In regard specifically to how, and again, my apologies, Ryan Lee, Assistant Chief of Police, for the record. The police bureau, the police bureau's acquired specific equipment to make sure that our instructions are more easily understood from a greater distance away for those involved in protest. We also have the incident commander for any of these events approve whatever those dispersal orders are going to be, they review them ahead of time. The incident commander issues the order for those dispersal orders to commence. They're in an incident command post, separate from the event, where they've got a clock, it's a more sterile environment, they try to afford as much time as possible as reasonable. And then, to ensure that the instructions are consistent, whenever it's feasible, the technology we've actually bought allows for their instruction to be recorded, so it's the exact same instruction that's going out over and over again.
Okay. I appreciate the explanation for what is happening, but what is happening is not working, and it's not safe for people who are engaging in legal, nonviolent protest. So, I'm going to cut off this question and just say, I would like to hear back from the bureau, any ideas or strategies you have for improving on that process.
Commissioner, we'd be happy to have that conversation.
Thank you. From videos I've seen, it appears that counter demonstrators, and I'm. From videos I've seen, it appears that counter demonstrators, and I'm talking about counter demonstrators against far-right extremists, are always the ones who are asked to disperse. Is this true?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, can you repeat that? I'm-
To the best of my knowledge, counter demonstrators against far-right extremist groups are always the ones asked to disperse, not the far-right extremist groups who are provoking the counter demonstrator demonstrations.
Deputy Chief Robert Day, Portland Police Bureau. And there have been many of these events, Commissioner, and we could not agree or disagree with that statement, because it is definitive to say always, and I can't speak to every event that's occurred, and every moment of police action's occurred in that time, but we can go back and look and provide you more information on that observation. If you have a timeframe you want us to look at, or a specific event you want us to look at.
I apologize, I don't have the dates, but I think in the most recent, or one of the most recent, counter protests that resulted in police violence, I would like to know if you can provide video or other evidence that counter demonstrators threw projectiles at police before the police began using violence in any of those recent demonstrations. And I, obviously, that's one you're going to have to get back to me on.
Yes, we'll follow up on that, Commissioner. Robert Day, Deputy Chief.
Next question is about crowd control techniques. How is it legal to subject everyone in a crowd to chemicals, flashbang grenades, and other dangerous weapons when there is no individualized reasonable suspicion that they are committing crimes, much less violent crimes? Maybe that's the city attorney.
Robert Taylor, City Attorney's Office. The police have said that they're going to review those, the use of those ordinances in response to the August 4th demonstration. I think that's a good legal question that we'd be happy to get back to you on.
Thank you. The next series of questions about, is about perceived PPP bias. Portlanders have sustained countless injuries at the hands of Portland Police Bureau, but I can't recall any instances of protesters from Patriot Prayer, Proud Boy, or other right-wing extremist groups being seriously injured by police. Is this accurate? If so, how do you explain this unequal application of force?
Robert Day, Deputy Chief, Portland Police Bureau. At this time, I can't speak to who has or has not been injured, so it will once again require some follow-up on our part to look at who's come forward, expressed that, and take a look.
How would you explain the perception, which has been reported in the media, that PPP see Patriot Prayer and Proud Boys and other right-wing extremist groups as more mainstream than Portlanders who engage in counter protests?
Robert Day, Portland Police, Deputy Chief. That's an assumption that I can't speak for the people either making the assumption, or to, or gaining the perception, I should say, and I can't certainly speak on behalf of every member of the organization in that regard.
Last summer, Portland activists were kettled and forced to provide ID. I still don't understand why this happened. Can you help us understand why it happened, and has PPP ever recorded identification information from the Patriot Prayer, or Proud Boy, or other right-wing extremist groups in this manner?
Robert Taylor, City Attorney's Office. That event is currently the subject of litigation.
The issue of the police turning their backs to the right-wing extremist groups and lining up facing protesters was raised earlier today. And the perception in the public is that the police is actually defending the right-wing protesters. So, I don't, I'm not asking for an explanation right now, but I'm asking if you can come up with a better strategy so Portlanders who are coming out to protest hate don't feel that our own police bureau is lining up against them.
Robert Taylor, City Attorney's Office. That's a, certainly a concern that has been addressed by others, or raised by others, and part of the goal of this ordinance is to announce rules in advance so that folks can go to areas where they can demonstrate safely, so we can avoid that situation like August 4th, where one group announces they're coming, another group comes to counter demonstrate, and then the police are lined up in the middle of the road to keep the groups apart. That is not a good situation for anybody involved. And this ordinance would give the police commissioner the ability to designate areas where people can go safely, so we don't have that problem you've identified.
So, I know that our policies have to be content neutral, but I don't have to be content neutral, and I'm just going to say that right-wing extremists pose a greater threat to our security and to our city than ISIS, let alone left-wing counter protesters. Homeland Security, Homeland Security, not an, not an organization I expect to be in agreement with very often, wanted to include alt-right extremism in their domestic terrorism initiatives, but Republicans shut it down because they called it an attack on conservatism, and it was watered down so local police don't track or ID members of these groups in the same way. Can the Portland Police Bureau explicitly and unequivocally state that Patriot Prayer, Proud Boys, and similar right-wing extremist organizations are the real threat to our public safety?
You're in a, in a position, Chief Outlaw, Portland Police Bureau. I've stated this before, because I've been asked, I've even been asked to pick a side. You're in a position as an elected official to do that. Given that I am not, and the Portland Police Bureau, we are not a political body, we are not in a position to do that. We focus on behaviors.
Okay. During the August 4th protest, my understanding was there were weapons checkpoints because of the threat of gun violence, violence. Yet media reports indicate that the Proud Boys and Patriot Prayer were able to breeze by these checkpoints. Can you explain why that happened, why no one was arrested, and how this ordinance would change our ability to regulate who brings what types of weapons to protest in our city?
Robert Day, Deputy Chief. Apologize, Commissioner, that's still being reviewed by the independent police review, so I can't speak to the specifics of August 4th. And I did want to affirm what I heard Mr. Taylor share, and a better understanding of your question regarding the perception piece. We are having conversations and understanding with our members to make sure that when we're on the line, and when we are present, that we avoid that perception. So I want to, I want to recognize that that has been heard, not just here, but in other venues, and we are addressing that piece. I failed to do so originally.
I'd like to give one of you an opportunity to explain the cache of weapons event, and explain how, why that was not a crime, and why no arrests were made in that situation. I'm not suggesting they should have been, but because there has been so much confusion in the public and inside this building about that event, I would really love to have it clarified on record.
Ryan Lee, Assistant Chief of Police. For clarity, I was not present at that event, but I've reviewed the reports for it. My understanding of that event is that during, immediately prior to the event, as groups were starting to show up, we were literally having a briefing in the Justice Center when people observed large groups on top of the parking structure, which is at First and Jefferson, you can see the top deck from there. We contacted several groups there. One of the groups that was there were individuals that had with them three rifles, as well as some body armor, obviously. It's a venue that's raised, that did cause us some concern, we contacted them. They had the weapons stored in a manner that was lawful. They also had concealed handgun license, which would allow them to have it. There was, as alarming as that conduct, and I understand why that would be alarming to the public, it wasn't unlawful, and we weren't in a position to make an arrest.
That's alarming, but I understand. So, I gave myself a time limit, the time limit is up. I actually have two more pages of questions, I will send them to you. And I will want to publish the responses, because these are questions from constituents and advocacy organizations, but I want to make sure and leave plenty of time for public commentary or testimony. So I do have one more question. We have a gang and task, Gang Enforcement Task Force. Why aren't these right-wing extremist groups being treated as gangs?
Well, investigations, as the chief commented, are based upon behaviors, and so I can tell you that we're looking at behaviors of all groups, whether it be regardless of their association, we're looking for criminal behavior for investigations.
Well-
Excuse me, Robert Day, Deputy Chief.
I don't want to be too confrontational, and I want to make it clear that I like and respect the chief, and I know we have a lot of decent, upstanding officers in our bureau, but I have some grave concerns with the bureau as a body, and how they're exercising the power they already have, and that is why I am, cannot support this, this ordinance. My friend's son, riding in his car with three of his friends, all young African-Americans, home on spring break from college, were pulled over for suspect behavior. And I agree with Joanne, when I see a truck flying American flags, I mean, it's a sad day when our own flag feels like a threat in our city. I'm, I feel threatened. I feel unsafe. I don't, I don't feel threatened by a car full of black teenagers driving through my neighborhood. So, I, I just want to point out that I see an unequal application of our laws, and I fail to understand how the behavior of these right-wing extremist groups is somehow less threatening than black teenagers who aren't doing anything wrong.
Is that a question?
Commissioner Salzman.
Since you're going to be providing lots of information to us, could you also quantify how much police overtime has been paid since 2016, related to demonstration events, and how many times precincts have been, had resources diverted, similar to what Representative Biden was talking about, below, I don't know if it's been at the staffing levels, but below some level. So if you could get that information to us, I think that would be useful for us to have at our-
So I provided, Chief Outlaw, Portland Police Bureau, I provided a number since 2016 previously.
Oh, you did.
But I will report back out to give you the specifics, I have a spreadsheet with, with details that I'll report back on, with on that.
And does that include diversion of resources from other precincts?
That does not, so we'll have to research that information for you to get, to get you those specific details.
Okay. And then Ms. McCullough, I stepped out of the room for a second to grab a coffee, but I thought when I heard you coming back, you and Commissioner Fish were talking about perhaps constructive input from the ACLU and how to produce an ordinance that could pass muster with you, or did I mishear that?
Commissioner Salzman, this is Kimberly McCullough, for folks on the record. We do not think that this ordinance could be remedied by amendment, but we are happy to engage with the city on suggestions about alternatives to the ordinance, and certainly are engaging in research and outreach to other jurisdictions to try to figure out if there are some alternatives that we could, that we could get other folks to suggest as well.
And by alternatives, you mean possible, that could, list of alternatives could include an ordinance? Or is it still, is it still we have the-
I don't know that it requires an ordinance, or if it requires just a change in, in practices, or if it, it requires something more creative. I think that, that this is something that we need to continue to engage in collaborative conversations with our communities about, but as to this specific ordinance, there, there are some really difficult constitutional hurdles to, to get over when you are basing restrictions on past activities and on predictions about future activities. That piece of it, and the fact that that's the core of the ordinance, is just not something that we think you can overcome.
Okay. I guess I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get at, in all honesty, whether we can get past sort of the two schools of thought here, as one is, you know, we need something different to respond to what I think are situations that are ultimately a result in Portlanders being killed, maimed, permanently paralyzed. Or can we get, are we going to sort of, and the other school of thought is, which is, we already have the tools, it's just the question of using the tools right. So I'm just trying to figure if we can bridge that gap, or do we just sort of need to, those of us up here have to choose which, which avenue we believe is going to be the most productive in keeping Portlanders protected.
Commissioner Salzman, I, I appreciate what you're getting at, and my hope is that through engaging in conversation, we can actually reach consensus on what the best path forward is. I don't think it needs to be a, like I said earlier, I don't think this needs to be a situation where folks essentially coming into our city and, and causing difficulties cause us to be head-to-head. I think Portland is a very special place, we have a really amazing community, and I think we can work together to find solutions.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Commissioner Fish.
I know we're about to say thank you to this panel and move on to public testimony. First, we're going to take some amendments, then public testimony. I'm knocked out Friday and Monday with treatment. We've, we've asked for some follow-up stuff, Commissioner Udaley has posed a number of questions, there's been other questions posed. I've asked some questions of the ACLU. We're obviously operating under, at least currently, a compact timeframe, who knows whether that will change. It would be helpful, though, to get some answers, say, Monday, Tuesday. I think this is coming back, at least preliminarily is scheduled for Wednesday afternoon, whether that holds or not is a council decision. But just in terms of timeline, I would love to see some initial responses on Tuesday of materials that you want us to review. And if, look, if we need more time, we're going to take more time, we're going to do this right, so, so thank you.
Thank you all.
Mayor, I have a-
Commissioner Udaley, sorry.
You're fine to leave, I just have a-
Thank you, yeah, thank you all.
Small request. We have representatives from the Urban League here who've been engaged with our office, and I believe others on this issue. Could we invite them to speak before we open public testimony?
Well, let's, let's do this, let's get to the amendments.
Okay.
And then let's get to public testimony.
I'm sorry?
No, I think we should go straight to public testimony after the amendments. Yeah. Are they, are they signed up, Commissioner?
They're signed up. There's just one, one individual.
Very good. So we have a number of amendments on-
Mayor, can I walk you through my proposed amendments?
Yeah, please, why don't you do that? Fish, one, two, and three.
So, I want to be clear.
I'm sorry.
In the limited time I've had to review this matter, and in some of the communication I've received from the public and others, it has caused me to reflect on a number of amendments. These would be things that I think need to be fixed, whether this passes or not, but we have a limited opportunity to propose amendments, so I'm going to put these on the table for public feedback. They are three amendments. Fish Amendment 1, amends the Directive K on page 7 of the ordinance, and I'll just paraphrase, to provide that the commissioner in charge should provide a written report to the council and the public describing whether the regulations were effective and the lessons that might be learned for future written orders. So, we have a tradition in this body of memos from the legal department often coming to us with a cloak of confidentiality. This is designed to make clear that whatever after-action report is submitted by the mayor is reviewable by the public and the council at the same time, but I would off, I would ask for a second on this amendment.
Second.
Fish Amendment 2 would change Directive L on page 7 as follows. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect through strike December 31st and insert June 30th, 2019, after which the ordinance shall expire unless renewed by council. What this does is create a six-month sunset in lieu of a 12-month sunset, and I would ask for a second for this amendment.
Second.
Fish Amendment 3 adds a Directive M on page 7 as follows. Quote, "To allow council to consider additional tools to address the concerns with demonstrations identified in this ordinance. The office of the city attorney is directed to report to council no later than January 10th, 2019, with an evaluation of additional legal options, including under the Oregon Constitution, Article 1, Section 27, quote, 'The military shall be kept in strict subordination to civil power,' end quote. ORS 166.660, that refers to unlawful paramilitary activity, and, excuse me, ORS 221.915, that's a nuisance defined by city ordinance, and any other identified options." I would ask for a second for this amendment.
Second.
So Mayor, those are my three amendments, and they're now on the table.
Very good. Colleagues, as the, as the commissioner proposing the substitute ordinance-
Colleagues, as the Commissioner proposing the substitute ordinance, I find none of these I would propose we just call the roll. On Fish One, please.
Can we, I thought we were going to take testimony first.
If we want to do it at the end of the testimony, that's fine. I don't see them as substantially controversial.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Isn't it best?
Public testimony.
Okay. I thought we wanted people to give testimony on the actual item.
No, they're on the table now. We heard Representative Bynum said that she thought it should be 60 to 90 days, for example, for the sunset. So for us to vote on a six-month without hearing testimony, when people have been waiting for over two hours now.
Okay, fair enough. Public testimony, two minutes each, name for the record. The microphones slide around. Please, people, if you hear opinions that are different than yours, it's okay. Let's all be respectful of people's opinions. We always call people who may have disabilities or people with children first.
Okay, we have probably about 36 people signed up.
Thirty-six, two minutes each, good enough.
Okay. So if those who have disabilities or people with children, just go ahead and come up first.
Two minutes, correct.
Just be sure to state your name so I can mark you off the list. Thank you.
My name is Philip J. Wolf. May I go ahead and present now?
Yes, please.
Great. Hello, Mayor Wheeler. Hello, city commissioners. And most importantly, hello to all of our constituents and community members here. I wanted to also thank the Chief of Police for coming and sitting and hearing us today. Thank you very much for staying through the public testimony. I think it's important that we stay through all of that and get to hear it together. I wanted to drive a point home about the ordinance that I have a concern about. Hopefully, you will understand that this will contribute to a lot of the problems that we have. I think that we're compromising the safety of a lot of Portlanders with this ordinance. First, I would like to review a couple of points, and then I'll make sure to wrap up. I've been to a number of protests since I've lived in the city, and I've never seen any of you at any of the protests I've ever been to. I've been at March for Our Lives, at Black Lives Matter, at motions and activities for people who were killed by Portland police. I've actually led a protest last fall for reducing police violence. I followed that by the book. I communicated with a police liaison. I asked for them to not show up in riot gear. I requested that they not try and involve themselves in the event, that I would take full responsibility for any escalation that happened, and contact that liaison as necessary. And things went very smoothly. We did have a truck, that's actually been mentioned today, with a big American flag that drove by threateningly. We did have community members and Antifa members that just made sure that we were protected, but nothing escalated further from that. And we did deviate slightly from my agreed route permit, but no one caused any property damage, and it didn't lead to any arrests. So through that experience, and then especially the experience, I believe Wednesday or Tuesday night, but I spoke at a protest here in front of City Hall, I made sure that I showed up for the community, and of course, to support the expression of people's voices, but to also study the police behavior, the responses in situations like that, and what the strategies were for handling those. So I came, like I said, as a community member to see that. I wanted to see who the Portland Police Liaison was. I brought my interpreter over and made myself known to them. I let them know my experience and that I was willing to help them. And he asked me multiple times to move items off of the sidewalk. Anyway, the point is that I think that having that communication led to better success. And later on in the night, while people were marching, there was a van that was giving police orders through a loudspeaker. And so imagine if a deaf person was there, a hard-of-hearing person is there, and isn't able to hear those actions or hear those orders. The ordinance needs to be accessible for deaf and hard-of-hearing people who are there. And the way that we're approaching it right now is completely inaccessible. So anything that's inaccessible and not serving the whole community needs to be held on and reassessed completely. And I do have some pictures that I brought with me today. Here's one that I'd like to show. I hope I can get it up on the camera here.
So Philip, can you leave it with the clerk? And she can photocopy and pass it out, and I will get them back to you.
Perfect. I'll give them to the clerk. So just for the record, I wanted to make sure that I mentioned them. In relation to the use of flashbangs, I studied one, ten.
I'm sorry, folks, we're not going to be able to hear from everybody if people don't stick to the two minutes, so please wrap it up. Thank you.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you, Philip.
Basically, through my research, what hurts me the most as a community member is that the police department does not seem to have any accountability for the harm they've caused on us. There's a lack of transparency about speaking about their behavior, officer behavior. But there's a lot of talk about community action.
Okay, folks, we're four minutes in.
So please, when we're talking about this ordinance, we need to be working together and continue to agree that we're living in this moment area.
Thank you. Let's stick to two minutes, please, or a lot of people aren't going to get a chance to be heard tonight.
Delighted to.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
My name is Guy Champion. I am a resident of Portland. I was born here 80 years ago. So my roots are deep, very deep. I come to speak on, I'm here to speak in favor of the ordinance for emotional, constitutional, and fiscal reasons. Emotionally, like I said, my roots are deep. I graduated from Boyce Elementary, Jefferson High School, Portland State College, and University of Oregon. Okay. So enough of that. But the emotional part is I hate what's happening to our city. I watched Chapman Square being ripped apart. I got a flat tire driving my scooter. I use a mobility device in the Pearl District because of broken glass everywhere, because of, I think, not far right-wing, but maybe anarchist group. I hate what's happening. So emotionally, it really hurts me. Constitutionally, this is an issue that we haven't talked about very much about. We've talked about freedom of speech, but we have not talked about the freedom to move about our city safely, without distress, without fear, without flat tires. Okay? So constitutionally, I feel my rights have been imposed on many times. Fiscally, that's where we've been covered by our delightful Chief of Police. This is costing us a fortune. And I live in Lowerhurst. The leaf pickup, they complain about the cost, but quite frankly, it's a fraction of what they're spending on violent, destructive protests. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon.
It's free now, by the way, leaf pickup.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Walsh. I represent Individuals for Justice. Sometimes it's not a good idea to do something, but it is legal. You can find a legal way of doing it, but sometimes it's not a good idea to do it. And when you get into freedom of speech, the Bill of Rights, the First Amendment, it's really difficult to pass anything, because that's the way the founding fathers wanted it. They didn't want you to trample on the freedom of speech, to have somebody decide where a protest will take place. I've been doing protests for 48 years, ever since I sent a letter to the Chief of Naval Operations saying, "You know what, Admiral Zumwalt? It's a bad idea to kill children in Vietnam." And of course, I lost all my security clearances. And I received an honorable discharge out of the Navy after nine years. So I gave up a career for the freedom of speech. That's what this is about, Mayor. When I heard you were going to do this, I couldn't figure out why. Why would you do this? Is there, I mean, slaughter in the streets of Portland? No. You have this fantasy of this clean, well-run city that nobody has a problem. It doesn't work. I come from a city that's not clean. It's the greatest city in the world. It's New York. People travel thousands of miles to go to New York. It's not clean. It's got protests all the time. What you're trying to do is impossible. You're trying to say, "I can pass an ordinance that's going to pass muster." Now, I realize Ginsburg is in a hospital, and maybe you can wait until you get another vote on the Supreme Court that will screw up the Constitution. But I'm telling you, you pastors, you're going to be a one-term guy.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
You are going to the Mediterranean to look for Hales, to see if his boat sank in front of Greece.
Thank you.
So we can fight a liberal democracy.
Next three, please.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh. Thank you. I got the point. Mr. Walsh, next three, please. Mr. Walsh.
The next three, are there any more with disabilities or children before I start on the list?
Mr. Walsh.
Any more with disabilities or children?
Mr. Walsh, you are in violation of the council. You are robbing other people of their First Amendment rights. Did that occur to you?
I am not in violation.
You are. No, you are.
You're in violation. Two minutes. You're eight.
We'll take a recess.
And then say, "Two minutes."
The first three are Robert West, Dan Handelman, and Peggy Zabrowski.
Can everyone please take a seat?
And they'll be followed by Nancy Newell, Mimi Gurman, and Brian King.
Okay, you, we need your name for the record, and you each have two minutes, and there's a clock in front of you. And I believe Dan was first? Dan Handelman?
Robert.
Robert, okay, Robert.
Okay, my name is Robert West. And there's a few things I wanted to bring up. One is, one part of what Chloe said I totally agree with, and that these groups that are classified as terrorist groups or, you know, domestic terrorist groups should be on the gang task force and should be investigated. Well, unfortunately, Antifa is also on the terrorist list, domestic terrorist list. The Patriot Prayer groups protest a lot, and the only time they have a problem is when they come to Portland, and they have a problem with Antifa. And I noticed Chloe brought up the fact that they're always facing Antifa. Antifa is the one that throws rocks at the police, rocks at counter protesters, bottles at counter protesters. You guys told the Proud Boys not to carry their weapons. They didn't carry their weapons, but Antifa carried their weapons. So, you know, you guys sit there and say, "Hey, you know, it's the Proud Boys." Well, let's look at May Day in Seattle. Last couple of years have been all right, but before that, there was no Proud Boys. You had officers going to the hospital, and you had Antifa going to the hospital. They're a violent group. Look at them down at the ICE protests when they knew the police weren't going down there, intimidating those people that own the food cart, going over and messing with the people that were in the apartment complex, sealing off that bicycle trail. If you walk through a Proud Boy and say you're Antifa, they don't do anything. But if you walk through Antifa with Make America Great, you get jumped.
Good. Thanks, Robert. Dan?
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Dan Handelman. I'm representing Peace and Justice Works and Portland Cop Watch. Peace and Justice Works and its project group, Portland Cop Watch, oppose the ordinance being considered to curb protesting in Portland. While the stated goal is to stop people from engaging in street brawls, the gist of the proposal is the mayor gets to decide who protests and where. And if you don't do what he says, you can be fined and put in jail. The most salient point in the ordinance is a citation of a Ninth Circuit opinion about adding large numbers of police leading to more intense violence. Yes, the PPB have proven this point.
It's not me. It's fully violating me in my face.
Can we have a pause on my time?
Yeah, pause, pause time for us.
Please.
Okay. Are we ready?
You take him outside? He's the one that's supposed to be. I wasn't doing anything. I'm not. I wasn't doing anything. Why him go outside? He's the one in the wrong because I'm speaking about him.
Calm down. I'm going to leave. Anybody else?
I was trying to listen to what he said. I learned a part. Yes.
Okay. Let's go ahead and resume. "We are a group that promotes and practices nonviolence. We do not agree with the tactics of the alt-right, Patriot Prayer, and Proud Boys protesters, some of whom came to Portland armed with rifles in August. We also oppose the government's assertion that it has a monopoly on violence by dispatching paramilitary police to attack crowds who fail to obey their orders. Those orders are frequently hard to understand, contradictory, or on their face apparently unlawful efforts to end First Amendment-protected activity. Portland Cop Watch continues to challenge Chief Outlaw's perception that anyone who stays around after police give a dispersal order is there to fight. We agree with the ACLU, this ordinance gives too much authority to one elected official, that the way to deal with people who engage in violence is to enforce existing laws against assaults. Not that we encourage the use of the criminal justice system, but it makes no sense to criminalize protesting when violence is the problem. The mayor asks why wait for people to engage in violence before stopping it? The reason is the same why the U.S. should not engage in preemptive wars, and why the U.N. only recognizes states' rights to act in self-defense. Preemptive action is first-strike action. If people are engaged in First Amendment-protected speech, they should not be subjected to arrest. In all cases, it's not right for the state to engage in violence to show people they should not engage in violence. Over the years, we have observed many protest actions in which we've seen police use less lethals, flashbangs, pepper spray, and other chemical weapons, not to mention batons. We had to entail indiscriminate chemical spray, avoid being stomped by police horses, and jump out of the way of police motorcycles on sidewalks. PJW organizes many protest actions against U.S. domestic and foreign policy, sometimes seeking a permit and sometimes not. What this ordinance sets up is the ability of a pro-war group that disagrees with us to post on social media they plan to counter-demonstrate and then trigger the imposition of these rules and making a subject may arrested.
Thank you, Mr. Handelman.
And put in jail or pay a fine."
Good evening. Oh, sorry. Right, okay, very good. Thank you.
I'm going to finish the remarks in our letter. This is a very disturbing.
Put your name in the record, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, Peggy Zabrowski.
Thank you.
This is a very disturbing proposal and doesn't fix the problem you intend it to. And the root of the problem is unparalleled spending in this country that this country makes on its military, leaving little for health care, jobs, the environment, and other human needs. The city could solve the homelessness issue, the street brawls, and the alleged need for more police all at once by asking its citizens to send 60% of their federal tax money to local causes instead of diverting it to weapons of war. The impulse to do something without a deep look at how differently it will affect democracy is the hallmark of a certain other elected leader who is now in. is the hallmark of a certain other elected leader who is now in the White House. Portland can do better than this, and we must. I want to acknowledge that there's a problem in Portland. The problem is that free speech, hate speech, is not free speech. We are seeing a rise of illegal kinds of organizations who, who are revved up by Trump's constant attacks on people in this country, who are making a sort of private militia. The folks in the Proud Boys, these other groups who come to town, are violent criminals. You look into their records, they have domestic violence, they have drug problems, they, you look at the Antifa kids, the only things on their records are demonstration charges. They're darling people. They don't attack, and they aren't about taking away our civil rights. They're about defending civil rights. So there really is a difference. In Liverpool, I guess about two weeks ago, Nazis came to town, and what they did was their mayor went out with the folks who were counter-protesting, and the Nazis went away. We need to drive the alt-right out of our town, out of our country, out of our White House, and we need your help doing it.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next three are Nancy Newell, Mimi Gurman, and Brian King, and they'll be followed by Lightning Supercreativity, Kalay Lubin, and Charles Bridge Crane.
I noticed when I testified, you, you, Mayor, and you stepped out. So you guys didn't hear my testimony?
I'm sorry, I didn't. I, I will review it, Mr. West. I had to use the men's room.
I had to take, also take a compassion break.
I think Ms. Newell's not, I think Ms. Newell's not here.
Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, please don't do this again. You've already robbed enough of our time.
I asked you a question. Why did you stop the woman with the baby?
Excuse me. All right, we'll take a recess again. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Amanda, there's a woman out there with a baby.
Yes, my name is, uh, Lightning. I represent, uh, myself, Lightning at this time. One of the concerns I have on this ordinance is that we've had some very knowledgeable speakers who are attorneys, representing various groups, and their position is not to move forward on this ordinance. And I agree with them 100%. And where, I guess my problem is, is that you have a city attorney that looks at this ordinance and says, "Let's move forward on this. We think we can get this pushed through, and it won't be deemed unconstitutional." I'm gonna tell you right now, the way that Tracy Reeves conducted herself in front of Federal Judge Michael Simon on that peace step, and saying that it should have been in compliance before they even did a meeting, in my opinion, you might want to get a new attorney. I really am not satisfied with the work she is doing. We have numerous groups in here, very knowledgeable on this, taking a stance and saying, "Absolutely not." Look at Seattle. Absolutely not. Litigation, tremendous amount of cost. There is no reason to move forward on this. You have a permitting process, you have certain things in place. This is an overreach. And I fought you on the speech codes in here, where you were doing an overreach. It was unconstitutional, and that was, again, proved that in front of Federal Judge Michael Simon. Again, you're moving too fast on this. It's not necessary, and I'm at total agreement on the issue that you think, Mayor, that this is gonna benefit the city. This is only gonna stop you from being reelected. Every other mayor that's tried to do this in other areas that are overreaching, it's unconstitutional. What happens? The people just don't vote for you when you want to get reelected. You really need to think on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
All right. Thank you. My name is Brian King. I'm a resident of Portland. I've read the, the ordinance, and I believe it gives too much power to a police bureau that has shown that it doesn't respect residents' rights to protest, and that has allowed violence to escalate through biased law enforcement. Protest violence has been allowed to escalate because of leniency shown to, by police to Patriot Prayer and associated groups. Police say that they don't have the tools to prevent violence, but Oregon and the federal government have laws to control militias. The Oregon statute against unlawful paramilitary activity prohibits groups from arming and training for civil disorder. When Patriot Prayer comes to Portland in body armor backed by multiple rifles stationed above a protest site, clearly, they are a militia prepared to use firearms for civil disorder. Yet, in the case of the rifles, instead of using militia laws to make arrests and prevent violence, police only asked individuals to stow their rifles. In contrast, I've seen police completely shut down nonviolent protests by Portland residents. On September 13th this year, I was in a peaceful march at the South Waterfront against O H S U's use of prison slave labor for laundry services. There was no opposition, there were no weapons, there was only support from the community. Portland police tailed the march after it passed by the ICE building on McAdam and blocked traffic with their patrol cars near the tram. Police were jeered by, by protesters for blocking traffic. I was about 10 feet away from officers at this point, and I heard one of the officers say, "I'm not in the mood for this today." Shortly after that, officers came up on the sidewalk and arrested a protest leader. When protesters objected, they were pepper sprayed by police, ending the protest. Charges against protesters were dismissed by a judge the next day. In reports, police said that bottles were thrown by protesters. I was there, I saw no bottles thrown. The ending of the protest had nothing to do with violence or the legality of the protest. It was ended using unjustified arrests and pepper spray because of the mood of officers. Portland police do not respect our rights. Since the Portland police do not respect residents' rights to protest and have been unwilling to stop Patriot Prayer-inspired violence, I urge the council to reject this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hi, I, I have to stand for this. I can't, I can't sit down when we're talking about this. Uh, my name is Mimi Gurman, and, uh, I've been in Portland since 1995. I've lived in North Portland that whole time. What I've witnessed here, um, and I'm from Philadelphia, I've lived in New York, I lived in Cambridge, I lived in Israel, and, um, I have never seen police behavior the way that I have seen what happens to us, to the people, that, as I have in the years since I first moved here. Peggy was beaten by the cops last year. I could name names over and over again of the police who have beaten people on our streets. Not, none of that, except for Chloe, and thank you for that today, for the questions from constituents, has been addressed. This ordinance, it's total BS, and that's nice of me to not use bad language. I want to face people and tell you, "I'm Jewish, I'm queer, and when Patriot Prayer, and Joey Gibson, and all of the rest of the nationalists, the white supremacists, the racists, the homophobics, the anti-Semolics come here, and they deal with me, and they deal with my sisters and brothers on the street, these people right here do nothing, absolutely nothing, to prevent them from my being hurt, but they hurt us." That needs to be understood by the people in Portland. It's the police who work with the fascist groups that come here that hurt us. It's the police who last summer, not this past August, but the summer before that, in August, shook hands with the Nazis as they escorted them to parking lots to get them out safely, as if anybody was gonna get hurt other than all of us who were shot out with tear gas by the police. This is a farce. This is a total farce. These people here are a farce, that they are here to protect us. They are not here to protect us.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
These people are not here to protect us. This army's all for that.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
The next three are Kalay Lubin, Charles Bridge Crane, and Jackie Yerby, and they'll be followed by John from Portland's Resistance, Edith Gillis, and Beth Woodward.
Good afternoon.
Thank you so much for holding this hearing. It's long overdue, I think, for all of us to get together. My name is Kalay Lubin. I live in southwest Portland. I've given my testimony to you by email, and it's about to come to you in print form in case your email box got overloaded. What I'd like to point out to you is, in addition to the email, the mayor has a write-up on a philosophy that's called "From Warriors to Guardians." There's a movement in this country to have our police force move from warriors to guardians and stop using military equipment on American citizens. I'll let you read that and think about that. A lot of good people are moving in that direction. And I've also included my research on flashbangs. They're extremely dangerous weapons. I worked on the less lethal work group with the C R C, and we did, we never did investigate these flashbangs because they've come into the city, I don't really know when, and I don't know how they got here. But I do know that they were invented for use in, I think the first time that they were used was to rescue hostages at Entebbe. And what happens with these weapons is they attempt to disorient a terrorist who is armed, and then you shoot that person dead, then you rescue the hostages. I'm sorry, I guess I'm taking longer than I should. I guess I'll just quit.
You've got another 30 seconds. 30 seconds.
30 seconds to go. 30 more.
Oh. Well, I, I guess that's probably enough of that. You can read more about it. But what I really wanted to say to you, Mayor, is that your ordinance put me very much in mind of a miniature form of martial law. I grew up in Hawaii under martial law. The Japanese came in, they bombed us, and we were put under martial law because we were considered dangerous. That's the tightrope that you're walking on, and I'm very sorry to have you there.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Jackie Yerby. I am the Director of Advocacy and Civic Engagement for the Urban League of Portland, and my pronouns are she, her, and hers. Thank you for this opportunity to testify about the protest policy. I had previously reached out to all of you a few weeks ago when the policy was first announced. Commissioner Fish, I really appreciate your staff reaching out to me and having a conversation about the protest policy. Mayor, I was at the vigil a few weeks ago, I guess two Sundays ago, it seems like forever ago, and I was deeply moved by your impassioned remarks about, about hate speech and hate violence. And I'm here today to talk, to, to express some concerns that I have, that the Urban League has about this protest policy. I do have some concerns about the time, place, and manner restrictions, but I'm not a constitutional lawyer. I took con law in college, that was a very long time ago, so I'm gonna defer to the wise people at the ACLU and the National Lawyers Guild to carry that water. I do, related to that, though, I do want to say that I wonder how this protest policy would have impacted the civil rights marches, the sit-ins, the protests, if those things would have been allowed, "allowed" in air quotes, under this protest policy. The people who sat in, who marched, who demonstrated for civil rights helped us to get to where we are today, and unfortunately, we're finding that we're still struggling to maintain those rights. I see that my time's coming up. My main concern is about the content, being content neutral. Unfortunately, it feels like good people on both sides, and clearly, there are not good people on both sides. There are white supremacists who are coming to Portland, who are threatening people like me, who are threatening L G B T Q I folks, and we need the mayor and the council to take a strong, unequivocal stance that hate is not welcome here and to have that backed by policy. The Urban League would love to work with you, and we've got the Mulagatis-Sarau Conference coming up on Tuesday, where we will have a panel to talk about this. Thank you.
Very good. And I'm gonna add one topic to the panel, which is the current form of government in the city of Portland that makes the mayor the actual police commissioner. Because policing has to be, it has to be content neutral in order to be constitutional. So I just want to put out there, it puts me in a very unique position, even relative to my colleagues, in terms of the things I can do and the things I can say and the actions I can take. And it is unique, I believe, in the United States that I have this dichotomy of circumstances.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. Charles Bridge Crane Johnson. It's bad, risky policy for you to go down this unwise road. You've even set a terrible, rocky, pothole-strewn foundation in your enabling documents. Here, when we look at this item on the agenda, Auditor's Item Number 70253, you look at your paperwork that's before you, page three of seven at the bottom, Item F. Demonstrators gathered in downtown Portland for demonstration, counter-demonstration, and unpermitted march. What happened is, there was a permit, you were supposed to contain Patriot Prayer inside Waterfront Park north of the fountain, and you didn't do it, so things went to hell, and your police shot anti-fascists with grenades. That's what really happened, but you don't describe the truth in your own documents. There was no unpermitted march except for the fascists that went down and caused people to be locked down in the Marriott because your incident commanders aren't capable of doing their jobs. The first part of their job would have been to have at least every other officer facing opposite directions. So at least half of the police were facing the armed fascist invaders in the Waterfront Park, but you, as police commissioner, did not exercise enough due diligence and supervision of the police department to make that happen. Creating another ordinance will not fix anything until you address that basic problem, that the police made crappy choices that cannot be fixed by an ordinance. It's not your fault. It was the individual bad choices of Portland Police Bureau incident commanders to face only at the anti-fascists on the west side of NATO and completely ignore the prancing racist. Not, not everybody that comes to a Joey Gibson event is a militant- Now, not everybody that comes to a Joey Gibson event is a militant, super hardcore white supremacist, but they never, ever speak about, out about the equal dignity of black people and brown people, do they? So, your ordinance, I get where you're coming from, but it's not the answer. The answer is to get the police to do fair, actual, neutral behavior while they're policing, and then when the brawls happen, we can't stop testosterone-laden idiot boys from having brawls. The last brawl was right next to the police station.
Thank you. Next three, please.
Are John from Portland's Resistance, Edith Gillis, and Beth Woodward. They'll be followed by Nina Ingram, Sam Resnick, and David Cantor.
I just want to make a statement. I would rather listen to my constituents than be here when you vote on the amendments, so I'm just going to stay here as long as I can. I have a meeting where I'm going to listen to people in East Portland, which is why I have to leave at 5:30, but given that my colleagues have said that they can stay later, I'd rather listen to you.
5:30, we'll take him up. Thank you. Hi, John.
Hello, City Council. My name is John, I'm a local activist in independent media here in Portland, and I'm here to express my opposition to the ordinance. I have been a victim of police use of force, witnessed unprovoked police violence on others during demonstrations, been assaulted by violent far-right wingers, and seen the same happen to many others. I too share your concern about violence in our streets. In an ideal world, there would be none, but that is not the world we live in. When I participated in protests at Occupy's camp, there were several occasions where protesters were attacked by law enforcement with chemical weapons and hospitalized with no treatment from law enforcement, and then they lied to cover up their use of excessive force. We were attacked, or had attempted attacks, on several occasions from far-right wingers, varying from attacks with hazardous waste on multiple occasions to assaults to brandishing weapons such as machetes. There have been several community reports of Proud Boys and their associates attacking random citizens, specifically trans folks, and police were not the ones that were contacted, as police have lost much of the community's trust. What options does that leave much of our community? It is often community defense. So to my concern about the ordinance, there is nothing in this ordinance that addresses the following: what specific groups are susceptible to these restrictions of their First Amendment rights? Who influences those decisions? What constitutes violence? How you will enforce these ordinance with populace, with the populace where demonstrations commonly incur? What happens in the, what happens if the unnamed groups show up to another demonstration, which was mentioned earlier? How to determine who is a part of these groups and how you enforce those restrictions on autonomous individuals? Much of the time when a far-right, when the far-right shows up in Portland, many groups and individuals counter-demonstrate. Members of these groups, as well as unaffiliated as citizens, don't have a sign saying, "I'm with this group," or "I'm not with this group." I know that my cohorts that hide their identities, I'm almost done, from the far-right or government suppression will be a target. Then what? Anyone with a mask is subject to hefty fines and jail time simply for not being in an area that police tell them to go, is the next step to then tell people what they can and cannot wear. I just want to end real quick. We already had a situation tonight, I don't know if you noticed, but a patriot prayer attending was trying to get pictures of activists. That was the scuffle in the back. This is the problem, this is why people wear masks. So...
Thank you for your time.
And he says, "I'll be respectful and walk out." That is their tactic. They show that they're respectful, and they pull stupid shit on behind the curtain.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Edith Gillis. I was with John, and I saw many of the same things, and I have also been a victim of repeated police brutality and brutality by other fascists. I have also been a witness as a medic, as a protester, as a peacekeeper, and as security. This is an emergency, as you know. The criminal gang of racist fascist terrorists are threatening, bragging that they're coming to town this Saturday, the 17th, and with the intent to commit more violent crimes. And the longer that we're allowing them to continue this, they get more money and they recruit more fascists who do more violence in more severe ways, and it spreads around the country. You're right, it is an emergency, but this ordinance would not solve any of the problems, it would cause problems. It is in violation of the US Constitution, international law, treaties, Oregon Constitution about free speech, assembly, and equal enforcement and equal services. The commissioner in charge is one person, too many, and that's in violation of the Constitution, it's anti-democratic, does not allow for accountability. One of the reasons why we have protests is because people feel that the civil institutions do not meet the needs and have betrayed the trust, and so they have to go to the next level to protect the community. We have to protect the community from the fascism, the violence by the police and by the outsiders. I could go through each and every one of these elements, there's just so many examples where you have a double standard. At Pride Parade, there are homophobes who come and are violent, and yet you don't cancel Pride Parade. At almost every event that you, Portland's United Against Hate, over and over, there's unequal enforcement, it's unfair, and it increases violence the way you have it written.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for being here, Commissioners and Mayor. My name is Beth Woodward, and I'm an occasional protester. I don't always decide until the day of a protest whether I'm going, and I usually don't belong to any group, and I think there's a lot of others like me in Portland. Recently, I decided not to protest something I cared about because I was afraid of the police. I had heard about kettling, I did not want to be, I got claustrophobia thinking about being kettled and the violence that can occur when they tell you to get out and you can't get out. I think, oh, speaking of police, have you ever stood opposite somebody that's dressed like someone in Star Wars? It is intimidating, it's provocative, and I think there'd be a lot less violence at protests if the police did not send so many resources and divert resources. So when you look at the cost of those resources, please keep that in mind. I really wanted to say today that I think the promise of security has always preceded increased power. People give it if they're afraid, and then the power is there to be abused, and that can happen in a city of this size, just as it can at the federal level. I expect to go to more protests in the coming months, and I hope it isn't years, but we're living with a president that has put children in prison, has children in prison now, has talked about putting more families in prison convicted of no crime. I have to protest, and I really appreciated the questions that Commissioner Udaley has raised about this ordinance. My main comment on it, I can't repeat others, there've been lots of great observations, but when I read it, the words "time, place, and manner" just struck me as very vague. And with that in mind, and there were no specific examples of what that means, I have this little book on tyranny you may have heard of, Lessons From How the Holocaust Happened, basically, during the last century, by Timothy Snyder.
Sorry, I'm going to need you to wrap it up unless you have just one or two more sentences.
Number one, I'm finished. Number one, do not obey in advance. This ordinance requires us to obey in advance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next three, please.
Are Nina Ingram, Sam Resnick, and David Cantor, and they'll be followed by David Davis, Amy Sattars, and David O'Brien. Nina Ingram, Sam Resnick, David Cantor. Your David, thank you. Alright, let's go with David Davis and Amy Sattars, if they're in the room. David O'Brien, come on up if you're in the room. Tony Haddon. Sam Mendoza.
I don't know.
Yes.
Who was?
Drew Maloney. S. Pilipatron. Aaron Garcia. Amy, Annie Rose Shapiro. O'Shea Spencer, oh, here comes somebody, thank you. Last I have O'Shea Spencer, Courtney Shannon, Mark Neeres, and Brandon Farley.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. I want to point to a dichotomy, dichotomy of narratives between what is said to be the driving motivation behind this ordinance and what it...
Do you just state your name?
David Cantor.
Okay.
The, what's driving the ordinance versus what it actually achieves. This ordinance is being presented as something to help limit the right-wing extremist violence that's coming into Portland, but when we look into what it actually does and we begin to talk about making space for, for these groups, we're actually talking about facilitating bringing right-wing extremism into our community, and it's important to consider the results of this legislation you're putting forward. In addition to that, I'd like to also talk about how this is going to play out in the streets. What we're going to see, if this goes through, is that Patriot Prayer is going to apply for a permit or something, they're going to come to town, and anti-fascists are going to show up to that protest. They're, they're going to disregard any police regulations, you have to stay such and such far away, they're going to confront the protest, because that's just what's going to happen, we have to be honest about that here. And the police are going to use this ordinance as justification to act violently towards the counter-protesters at that action. We're going to end up with a situation where the police are going to use force against the counter-protesters, the counter-protesters are going to sue the city, and this is going to get brought in front of the court. I'm sure the ACLU and the NLG are going to bring up the questions that they've already brought up about the constitutionality of this ordinance, and I think that all it serves to achieve is facilitating greater right-wing activity in our city. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
So my name is David Keith Davis with Multnomah County Cop Watch. I'd first like to offer Ted Wheeler a gift. I know you can't accept gifts usually, but as supreme shitlord of Portland, supreme commander, dual-position tyrant of the Portland Police Commissioner and/Mare, I want to let you know that this is a total segregationalist policy, and you guys are all voting for a segregationalist policy that restricts people based on political affiliation, and it's totally unconstitutional. I've been telling the police this for years, that you can't separate groups based on political ideology any more than you can on race, gender, sexuality, or any other stuff. So this is a total failure, and for you to even think that you can push this crap through, you know, makes you the supreme shitlord of Portland. You want this? Want this, Ted? You can drop it off at your front door. But, yeah, you're, you're obviously overstepping your bounds. This is going to be struck down. Don't be surprised if a class-action lawsuit comes down from members of the left, the right, and also people like me from Cop Watch that are just filming these events and that have got segregated and told that I can't go on this side, that side, when I'm going back and forth filming as a journalist. So you guys are restricting journalists, cop watchers, and you're basically telling people that they need to choose sides. Well, there's actually a bunch of different crossbreeds of different political affiliations on both sides, so you can't like, so if you're going to segregate it by two different groups, you should actually say, "Well, this is a communist, a socialist, these are anarchists, these are patriots, this is a libertarian, this is actual, this is actual, a real Nazi."
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, get your fucking hands off me. Yeah, I'm getting my bag now, get the fuck out of my way, punk.
Take a brief recess.
You're not fucking, you're not fucking the supreme shitlord, Ted. Get the fuck...
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Annie Rose Shapiro. I'm a Realtor, a housing advocate, a homeowner, longtime Portland resident, and a Jew. It's been a hard couple of weeks. This proposal undermines all those who speak out against the hate of rising white nationalism. It puts more power in the hands of the wrong people, the Portland Police Force. The Portland Police Force has not only sheltered but commended Captain Mark Kruger, an open neo-Nazi. His subsequent promotion could not have been possible without police who share his values. The Portland Police Force commits violence against Black, trans, people of color, immigrant, and houseless community members. It comes to the aid of white nationalist groups. Portland is indeed a brand and a tourist destination. White nationalists like the Proud Boys flock here, and if you will, allow me to read a little bit from an article from a nice little rag. It's called "The Daily Stormer." Portland Nazi Wins Big. Daily Stormer, August 9, 2014. "Hail Captain Kruger, thank God for small victories." Honestly, though, this victory isn't particularly small. Here's a nice little quote from the Portland Intelligence Server context, you know, they expunged his record, gives him a cool $5,000 of taxpayer cash, and adds a letter of commendation to his file. And there's more, but, and I'll quote from the Portland Intelligence Server, then they close, "National socialism is eternally cool forever. No Jew, no Jew can cancel this fact." I'd like to work on that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I'm not done yet.
Oh, sorry.
I say that is some good branding we have for the city of Portland, and, you know, there's a reason that white nationalists flock here. And guarding a synagogue one day and eating Patriot Prayer the next day does not keep people of color safe, does not keep queers safe, or any, it does not keep anyone targeted by hate groups safe, and it sure as heck doesn't keep Jews safe. If I could have a little bit longer, I'd appreciate it.
No, we're trying to keep it on track.
Okay, well, I'll just finish here and say if you want to, say if you want to...
It's fine, thank you.
Next three are O'Shea, excuse me, O'Shea Spencer, Courtney Shannon, and Mark Neeres, and Brendan Farley. Any of those people in the room? And if you signed up and didn't hear your name called?
Is anyone else?
I think a lot have left, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mark Neeres, expressing opposition to the ordinance. I'm a Democratic Precinct Committee person for House District 2736, and have been a regular attendee at street demonstrations since 2011 when I moved to this city. I'd like to share some of my experiences and observations. Anti-fascists in this city have shown the moral clarity to fight fascist, racist, and hateful ideologies that endanger our communities on the street and at the recruitment level at great personal risk to themselves. I have observed a consistent pattern where police from the Portland Police Bureau come down with extreme prejudice against anti-fascist demonstrators. This reality on the street is not lost in far-right demonstrators who flaunt Blue Lives Matter regalia and flags alongside white nationalist banners. There has been a lot of talk from the Portland Police about safety and preventing violence, but little acknowledgement about the violence their heavily weaponized forces have deployed against demonstrators, almost exclusively on the left. I have been in crowds, shot at with flashbangs and other crowd-control weapons by Portland Police on no less than three occasions. I myself was struck with the flashbang on May 1, 2015, that burned through three layers of clothing and seared a permanent scar into my right arm. We know on August 4 of this year at least three people were sent to the hospital as a direct result of the flashbangs deployed indiscriminately into a crowd of leftist demonstrators. I was present in that crowd, what I witnessed was an escalation of police force greater than anything I've seen post-O occupy. One friend experienced severe chemical burns and another individual suffered a brain hemorrhage. The sad reality is that the Portland Police is acting as the armed wing... The sad reality is that the Portland Police is acting as the armed wing for far-right to inflict injury against their political opponents. Am I on time?
Thank you.
Perfect.
That was probably the best of the day in terms of timing. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Courtney Shannon. You guys don't know me real well, but I know you. I have been a victim of your police force while sitting in the park minding my own business with a demonstration in front of City Hall. Okay? Two blocks away. And I got hit with nerve gas. I've got too many health issues to run from you. I can't run from you. I'm not strong enough to run from you.
We can't, we can't, we can't hear you if you're not speaking to the mic.
I am disabled, okay? I've got leg braces on both legs, okay? I can't run from her. I can't run from her lackeys that she employs, that you employ, actually. You are in charge of the police, are you not?
The responsibility starts with me, absolutely. The buck's with me.
Yeah. So I encourage you to get out from under your desk and come out sometime and hang out in the park while people are out here trying to express their opinions. I'd like to know why it is that money is being wasted on things like this and by useless ordinances when people are out on the streets dying on the sidewalks that are houseless. You sat here and you watched this woman cry in this very chair yesterday and did not know what to do with her. I applaud you for going out in the hallway and talking to her. But you gave the task away to someone else who wasn't equipped.
No, I'm, that's actually, you can stop the clock for just a moment. That's not at all what happened. We took her up to our office, and she was there for a good chunk of the day by her own choice, and we connected her with professionals who could actually help her from central city concern and elsewhere. Just so you know. Now you may start the clock again.
That's not what my understanding from her. And I did talk to her, and I do plan on following up with her again about it.
I encourage you to do that.
Okay? In the country where some genius crunched the numbers, okay? Of all the houseless people nationwide, you can house each and every houseless person 28 times each. My friends are literally dying on the sidewalk right now, and you're holding a meeting about this? Why aren't you holding special meetings? Why aren't you rezoning land?
Thank you.
Why aren't you taking care of the things that you need to take care of?
Thank you. Your time is up.
Instead of enforcing bullies.
We're doing all of the above. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes our public testimony for today. That concludes our public -- are you on the list?
Yes.
Okay, please, go ahead. Two minutes. Name for the record, please.
All right, my name is Brendan Farley, @FarleyFilms, Twitter.
Do you have testimony, sir?
I'd like to waive the rest of my time, please.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public testimony for this evening. Thank you very much. So we are not voting on the overall substitute ordinance. I want to make that very clear. But we will be taking up Commissioner Fish's amendments. And I think we heard some testimony on those amendments. We'll take them in turn. The first item is Amendment, Fish Amendment 1. And that was pertaining to within 30 days after each demonstration for which the commissioner in charge has issued written orders pursuant to the ordinance, the commissioner in charge shall provide a written report to council, and he's added, and the public, describing whether the regulations were effective and the lessons that might be learned for future written orders. Any further discussion on this item? Please call the roll, Carla.
Udaly.
I'm going to vote aye on this amendment, but I want to make it clear that I will not be supporting the overall item. I am concerned that it could pass, and I see some marginal benefit from these amendments in that event. Aye.
Fritz.
This stuff makes it better. Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Wheeler.
I support it. And the reason I support it is, as I said at the very beginning of this process, what makes this particular strategy unique, it is preventative, and I heard lots of different comments, pro and con, with regard to that. But because it requires written orders in advance, and those orders have to be consistent with the ordinance, and because there is the opportunity for people to oppose those orders and even seek an injunction to those orders in advance, it is perhaps the most uniquely transparent aspect of policing, should it actually pass. So I vote aye, the amendment is adopted. Fish Amendment 2 amends Directive 1 on page 7 as follows. 1. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect through June 30, 2019, after which the ordinance shall expire unless renewed by the council. Is there any further discussion on this item? Please call the roll, Carla.
Udaly.
Again, I will be voting no, but I will vote aye on this amendment.
Fritz.
I'm concerned about the amendment, but again, it makes it somewhat better. I would go with what Representative Bynum suggested, which was a much shorter, maybe three months. But that's not the amendment on the table, so this makes it better. Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The amendment's adopted. Fish Amendment 3 adds Directive M on page 7 as follows. To allow the council to consider additional tools to address the concerns of demonstrations identified in this ordinance, the Office of the City Attorney is directed to report to council no later than January 10, 2019, with an evaluation of additional legal options, including under the Oregon Constitution, Article 1, Section 27, "The military shall be kept in strict subordination to the civil powers." ORS 166.660 unlawful per military activity, ORS 221.1905, nuisance defined by city ordinance, and any other identified options. I have one question, and it's of Robert, legal counsel. And it's just a quick question. I support the amendment. I support the intent of the amendment. I just want to make sure January 10 is a timeframe that is a realistic timeframe.
Robert Wheeler, Chief Deputy City Attorney.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay, very good. Please call the roll.
I like that answer. Udaly.
I believe this is our final vote before moving this to second reading and adjourning.
Correct.
Is that, okay? So I just would like to thank everyone for coming today. I want to thank the ACLU and Urban League in particular for working with us over the last couple of weeks since this ordinance came to our attention. I want to quote my friend Eric Ward of Western State Center. "This is a political problem more than a police problem." And I want to emphasize that we need our local advocacy organizations and nonprofits to step up. We need a concerted community effort to shut right-wing extremists down. We need our colleagues at every level of government to speak out against hate in general, but specifically the hate groups who are targeting our city. And we need the media to stop shining a distorted spotlight on these protests and start helping the public to better understand the issues and the possible solutions. Again, I will not be voting yes on this ordinance next week. I will support this amendment. I look forward to talking with and working with all of you for a better solution moving forward. Aye.
Fritz.
I particularly support this amendment. I think we should be doing it instead of, instead of the actual proposal on the table. But this will create some more conversation. I would encourage the City Attorney's Office to work with the ACLU and other entities to have the evaluation done. Again, I thank everybody who was here today and all the testimony we've received ahead of time. I apologize to those community members who weren't able to stay and testify because of the amount of time the presentation and the conversation of council took. And thank you to Commissioner Fish for proposing these amendments. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler, for having this discussion and being willing to have a panel against a panel for. And really, nobody could say this was not a robust discussion.
Agreed.
Google tells me I can get to East Portland in time, but I'm leaving right now. Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Well, first of all, I want to thank my colleagues. This one is not on them. This is a very difficult issue. I knew it would be controversial from the get-go. I am almost positive that my colleagues would rather not have been subjected to this, and so I thank them for it. The reality is protecting the public interest and the public safety ultimately is the responsibility of two individuals. Chief Outlaw, who has been here the entire night, she just had to get up and leave because she has another appointment, but she has sat here and heard all of the testimony. And myself is the elected mayor and police commissioner. And I have watched with increasing dismay what's unfolding on our streets, and I share the concerns that seem to be a consensus concern in this, in this room, whether people like the ordinance or don't like the ordinance. There seem to be a consensus concern about violence in our community. And I want to be clear, this, as I said right up front, this is not a panacea. I do not see it as a panacea. This is one of many tools that we have at our disposal, along with enforcement tools, along with education and information, and along with setting clear expectations, and all the other things we do around directives and public engagement and our various oversight committees. So I just want to be very clear about that. I heard a lot of testimony tonight, and --
Ted, I'm sorry, I have to go.
Thank you, Commissioner Fish. I heard a lot of testimony tonight specific to the desire for police reforms, concerns about police accountability, concerns about the history of the police bureau and ways that that history might bleed into today. The chief and I are aware of these things. And the chief and I have committed to working together as relative newcomers to, to the city of Portland's leadership to go through these and work with the community and address these concerns. I know we are both committed, and yet, a lot of what I heard suggested to me, people are saying, until you fix those things, we do not want this ordinance. It's very similar to what I heard during the budget process when we asked for additional tools and resources and personnel for the police bureau, where people said, not until you fix these things. And what I want you to know is that the men and the women in the Portland Police Bureau work hard, day in and day out, to try and protect the safety of the public. It is a very difficult job. And these issues related to making sure that large demonstrations are safe are particularly complex situations. They are very difficult to manage. And I see this as just being one more tool to help us do it effectively. And I'll finish with this. Chief Outlaw said something that I thought was very important, and people can agree with her or disagree with her. I tend to agree with her because she spent, you know, two-plus decades being an officer. She believes that this actually would reduce the number of arrests because it would clarify in advance the expectations. And I've heard other officers say that the hardest situation for the police to manage is moving large groups of people who have already occupied a space. This in advance would set the expectations. So I just wanted, you know, those were just a couple of things that came to mind. I really appreciated the testimony tonight. It was very thoughtful, very heartfelt, well-researched, and I agree with my colleague who said this is really, it was a good discussion. It was a very thorough vetting, and I appreciate you're all participating. To Commissioner Fish's amendment, I'm very interested in this strategy. As many of you know, this is a strategy that was employed after Charlottesville, and that was certainly on my mind as mayor, and it's certainly, I think, on the minds of people who want to safely exercise their First Amendment rights on the street. I have heard varying legal opinions as to whether or not statute and constitutionality in Oregon is necessarily germane to the same kinds of circumstances they had in Charlottesville and the same constitutionals and statutes, constitutionality and statutes they have in Charlottesville. But I'm with all of you. Let's try. Let's see, let's see where we can go with it. Let's evaluate it. So with that, I support the amendment. I vote aye. There being no further business, this is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. The substitute, as amended, moves to second reading. Legal counsel, before I gavel, is there anything else I need to do?
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.[1747.51][1747.51][music]